Johnson, Milton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Please be seated. Good afternoon. Recently, we mourned the loss of a woman who was described as a loving mother and grandmother. She was described as adventurous, brave, strong, smart. She was sweet but a force. And no, I'm not referring to Queen Elizabeth II at the United Kingdom. I'm referring to Sigrid Larson Festerston, Pete Festerston's mother. The seven of us that make up the Omaha City Council are in some respects like a family. We work together. We laugh together. We argue. We disagree from time to time. And I'm sure you'll see a little bit of all those attributes in the coming hours. But we are a clan of sorts. And as such, we mourn together the loss of one of our own's loved one. I've known Pete and his family for most of my years, and I know the importance of sailing in his family's life. And it was clearly evident at last week's service celebrating his mother's life. Sailing is an interesting sport and pastime, especially when it involves the team of a skipper and crew. You must act in concert to use the wind to get to the finish line or wherever your final destination may be, both in heavy air and in drifters. And Pete knows what I'm talking about there. But you end up on a body of water with your team, working together, sharing time together. Pete and Sigrid shared this experience hundreds of times over. I know that he will miss those days and experiences, but he will cherish every memory of those days. And so, Pete, we'd like to acknowledge your mother's life and joy of sailing. And we got a little book for you and signed it. If you wouldn't mind, I'm gonna just pass it down instead of hand it to you because I have to do a little bit after here. But we hope you can pick this up from time to time to remember your mother, Sigrid Larson Festerston. And I want to close by saying, interestingly enough, after I wrote this this weekend, I learned of another loss of one of our loved ones. And that's, we also mourn the loss of Dale Rowe, which is my buddy here, Don Rowe's father. And for Don and his wife Marcy, Don's sisters, their family in Maryland, Dale's wife is 68 years. You and your family are in our thoughts and prayers as well.
Thank you very much to all my colleagues. It's very touching. Appreciate it. And thoughts with the Rowe family tonight, too?
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Public hearings on the budget and capital improvement program were held on August 16th, 2022. What we have first on our agenda today is charter our budget resolutions to amend the city budget. And the reason why we're doing them this way is because we're adopting a charter convention proposal, which was to have public hearings on any amendment to the budget before they are adopted on the Budget Adoption Day, which is today. So this is new for us this year. And so what we'll do is go through each item that's been proposed by a council member as a budget amendment. I'll first recognize the council member that introduced that amendment for a short explanation of what it does, and then we'll take proponents and opponents. And I was a bit thrown off there, so I know I skipped the introduction that I typically give to the members of the audience. But I do want to remind you that we look forward to your testimony today, and I would encourage you to turn your cell phones off or at least to vibrate. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Item six, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2023 recommended budget to increase the general fund in parks by $50,000 for Imagine Inclusion.
The public hearing on vote on number six is today. First, we'll recognize Councilman Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm fortunate to be able to lead this off today. I was back in April. I met a couple of ladies in my office across the hall, and they brought a proposal to me that is in District Five. It's probably in one of the most active parks in the city. It's Lake Zirinsky Park. And they showed me a proposal that they were working on, and they were doing some fundraising for a concept called, and their group, their nonprofit is called Imagine Inclusion. And they were talking to me about kids and how they play at the playgrounds and those kinds of things. And the fact, it was a fact that came up that there was no opportunities for kids with disabilities to play in a playground west of 84th Street. And so they have taken upon themselves to organize and put together a group that is planning to construct an inclusive playground at Lake Zirinsky Park. And I thought that was a great idea. I mean, you know, when kids go to play and they've got a brother or sister or cousin sitting on the sideline, that's not really right. And I'm hoping that we can let all those kids get in the game. And I'd like to invite Megan or Lauren, either one, if they are here, to come kind of share the vision that they have. And I'm proposing a $50,000 contribution from the budget to help with their fundraising effort for that project.
So first, why don't I take it from here and do proponents, which you are, and then we'll take it from there in terms of the public hearing. So we'll now recognize proponents of number six.
Great, thank you. Is there a way for me to share any imagery?
Yes. Is it, do you have it on the screen there electronically? Yeah.
Over here. This one?
Yep.
Well, that, where did it? Like, that is not mine. Hold on. There we are. Sorry.
When you're ready, too, just to remind you, your name and address for the record, too?
Yes. I don't know why it's not showing up. I wonder if it went in here on accident. You know, that might be easier at this point. Give me one second to, you know what? I'll just do it without imagery. I'm Megan Walz, and I'm one of the co-founders for Imagine Inclusion. As Councilmember Rowe mentioned, our current project is the establishment of an inclusive playground at the main pavilion area of Zirinsky Lake. And the view that I had to show has a large number of inclusive and fun elements that we have intentionally chosen to engage the senses and promote socialization for all children and families. We want to emphasize that playgrounds are for the entire community and not just the children. An inclusive playground benefits everyone. They bring families together. They create spaces where groups and organizations can gather and be confident that everybody can participate. Zirinsky Lake is the busiest park in our city, and this would be the first inclusive playground west of 84th Street. And the entrance will be complete with a 3D printed tactile map of the playground, which is very cool, but also includes, or also for someone who learns through touch or is living with any variable. Sorry, just helping with the picture. Any number of vision impairments to better orient themselves and enjoy everything that the playground has to offer. Our budget, including contingency, is $1,605,000. We currently have pledges of $485,000, including support from the Logier and Sunderland Foundations, sponsorships of a little over $16,000, individual contributions and events for a little over $117,000, which leaves us with $381,864 to project completion. So receiving a $50,000 gift from the city is a commitment to our project would put us in an even stronger position as we propose what we hope to be our final round of foundation asks, and then work with Parks and Rec to initiate construction. So we thank you for your consideration, and we hope to see you at our annual Illuminate Inclusion event at the playground site December 9th and 10th. And these are some images of the playground design from our website for all to enjoy. So it's imagineinclusion.org if anyone wants to take a look and see a little more closely. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'd like to move for approval.
Motion, second. I need to take for other proponents that might be here today that want to speak. Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I haven't had a chance to read the attachments, but I'm opposed to this for this reason. Maybe it's just a matter of changing a word. I don't find it funny. But the word inclusion needs to be changed because it implies that there's people that are not included. I'd like to know, maybe you can have a discussion, who is not included? And why are we spending tax dollar money that needs to go to some other projects possibly for a city park? It's not explained. And not all of us have had a chance to read the attachments at home before we come. So maybe you should have a little further question and answer on this. And the word inclusion is one of those critical race theory words that's all over the place, including this building, this body and the body that beats earlier. And those words are critical race theory words, and they do not need to be used all the time. Whoever's writing these things need to find some different words. Because by including it, everybody else, you're excluding who? You know, you can't have it both ways. Thank you.
Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the two ladies that came up and brought their presentation up and presented it very well, the park did exude excitement, a place of belonging, and opportunities that could be endless. And so I say, you know, this is what we should all be aspiring to become as a city, as a people, and definitely as kids and as leaders. We definitely want to paint this picture for our childrens that will be coming behind us and leading this future of this city way into the future. So again, I applaud you for your dream and your ability to share that with us, and I am in complete support of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very supportive of this as well. For all those same reasons, it's a great project, a great partnership. When you have dedicated folks like yourselves partnering with the city and philanthropy, that's how some great things get done, especially in our park system. And a great example of this is in Benson Park, where we have an all-inclusive playground as well that's been very popular for the community. So look forward to having one in your area, too. Ms. Milton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I love the name of your organization. The city attorney didn't pick it for you. I believe you picked it, Imagine Inclusion, and I think it's great. You've got the T-shirt on. But this is a great example of we're building a park for everyone in the city to use, and our contribution from the Parks and Facilities Fund, which is used to build parks, maintain parks, this $50,000 is being matched by, I think it's over a million dollars in philanthropy? Is that? The total? And so to me, that's quite a return on investment. So I really appreciate all of the money that you're raising to build this. I can't wait to see it, and I think it's a great use of the money that we have in our budget for parks and recreation in our city. So thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson, Milton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2023 recommended budget to increase the general fund and community service programs by $25,000 for rejuvenating women.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Ms. Milton, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. And again, I would like to reiterate, this is not money that we're taking away from roads or potholes that we hear about. This is community service funds. We have a fund for community service programs, and that is what the city does. We funded, I know our keynote funds can only be used for community service programs, and I think sometimes that gets overlooked. So the mayor kind of allocates, I remember, I think it was the first year, so it would have been about nine years ago, you know, the mayor allocated all the community service dollars, and then the council members, I guess it would have only been Mr. Festerston and I, but then we started messing with her allocations, right? Because we'd take away from what she wanted and change it to what we wanted. So now the mayor kind of sets aside the $300,000 to allow council members to talk about it amongst ourselves and kind of look at some of the organizations that we have. So that's what I've done this year. And I didn't ask rejuvenating women to come down unless anybody from rejuvenating women is here. She came down during our budget hearing, because again, this was presented at our budget hearing, which was held at the beginning of August, so that people have had a lot of time to be able to look at what we're doing and look at the organizations. But rejuvenating women serves victims who are becoming survivors of sex trafficking. And I can tell you, it happens everywhere, and it can happen to anyone. I know a lawyer whose daughter fell into that. I had a client just yesterday who disappeared, and we, fortunately, Sarpy County Sheriff was able to find her, victim of sex trafficking. And she has incurred so much trauma in her short 16 years, just in the last two, from a good home, going to a good school, but fell in love with an older guy who convinced her that he loved her. And nowadays, we have a lot of drugs coming in, we have fentanyl coming in, and this is how sex trafficking happens. It's not the black van that kidnaps somebody, a kid from the park. Kids are groomed. Young women are groomed, and they're groomed into this, and they end up being sex trafficked for money and drugs. And actually, sometimes they get hooked on it from being convinced that somebody else loves them. And it is happening in our city, unfortunately. And we need places like rejuvenating women because we don't have a lot of places for victims of sex trafficking. It requires specific counseling for the specific trauma that these women have encountered. In addition to the women's shelter that we have here in Omaha, they're also building one for youth. And that is extremely needed right now because we do not have the capability to serve the youth victims of sex trafficking. And unfortunately, most children victims of sex trafficking are being trafficked by family members, sometimes by their own mothers, stepdads, boyfriends, uncles, aunts, and that's what we see. And we have way too many in this community. So this organization is really helping to heal them, provide them with the counseling that they need. And so I am asking for your support for this $25,000 to come out of our community service funds for rejuvenating women. Thank you.
Thank you. Any proponents to number seven that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Johnson, Milton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item A, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2023 recommended budget to increase community service programs by $50,000 for the Omaha Sports Commission.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm asking for an allocation of $50,000 to go to the Omaha Sports Commission. Many are probably familiar with some of the signature events that the Omaha Sports Commission has been involved with, such as the Olympic swim trials. But their mission and vision is to make Omaha a premier youth and amateur sports community in the United States. And the commission works closely with area businesses and community leaders to help recruit and promote athletic sporting events. Its mission is to, it's really an economic driver for our city. And since the inception of the Omaha Sports Commission, there's been over three, close to $400 million of economic impact to the metro area. And so after the loss of the swim trials, it's still important for this mission to continue, and they are pursuing other events, both large and small. There's one that we're hoping to hear by the end of the year or maybe after the, just after the first year, which would be another signature event that Omaha would be very proud to host and would be an economic driver for the city. So I really view this as an investment that would be a good return on what we can help to contribute to Omaha Sports Commission and their mission.
Thank you. Any proponents to number eight that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Johnson, Milton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item A is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2023 recommended budget to increase public works by $50,000 for the North Saddle Creek Neighborhood Business District Streetscape Project.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. This was one that was introduced by me, so I'll give a short introduction. This would dedicate $50,000 for a design contract to continue the neighborhood business district work in District One that in the past has included Dundee and Benson and Florence. This next, I think, great opportunity is in the North Saddle Creek area, essentially northwest radial along North Saddle Creek Street, all the way up to what's known as the Peanut. Some great reinvestment happening there right now, and a little bit of public investment into the infrastructure there could really improve those prospects for those local businesses in that neighborhood, including safer pedestrian crossings, enhanced bike lanes, curbing, landscaping, all the things that make a neighborhood business district special. So this would allow us to engage those property owners in the neighborhood in that design work, and then have it be ready for potential construction in 2023, timed and coordinated with the potential development of a business improvement district there, and also some development that's already been approved by the city council that would all work together in concert. Having said that, I'll now call for any other proponents that are here on number nine.
My name is John Pollock, 1412 North 35th Street, Omaha. I am generally in favor of this project. I think it would be an improvement to the area. My one concern is that thought be given to flooding because it's in a very low spot. The choices are either to elevate the businesses and whatever else may go in there and route the water under the street or have the businesses subject to inundation. I realize that you're going to try to increase the water flow underground through the area, but there's still going to be circumstances where there's some really heavy rain. Otherwise, it's a good improvement to the area. Thank you.
Other proponents today?
Hello, Luke Schror, 2522 South 33rd Street. Like in everything I'm hearing so far today, the inclusion that you guys voted in favor of, we know that historically curb cuts at intersections help everybody. People in strollers can benefit from things like that. The sports that you also just passed promotes healthy living, and if we can make these improved districts more bikeable and walkable, that's another way to promote getting out and being active. So there's a lot of homogenous things going on here, and you know me, I'm always up here championing improving our walkability and bikeability to promote mobility of any form, people inside of cars or outside of cars. So I am definitely a proponent of this one. Thanks.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I do live in this area. I am an opponent. I don't know everything about this. I didn't have time to read the attachments again. But I, North Saddle Creek Neighborhood Business District, is that correct? Is going to lose $50,000?
No.
But I didn't quite hear where that $50,000 is going. But I would object to losing that because that North Saddle Creek area there from Hamilton on up does need some improvements. So I hate to see that money lost. But I guess the budget has already kind of been voted on, and now we're revising it. But I also know that you can come back next week with an amendment of the whole to do whatever you want anyway. But I'd like to see some people vote no on this for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Second, roll call.
Johnson, Milton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2023 recommended budget to increase parks by $14,500 for parks' trail enhancements.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. I introduced this one in concert with Councilman Bagley. My thought, and then I'll defer to him, is that this is an allocation we worked with the Parks Department to improve a section of trail that needs it badly. We've worked along this area between Districts One and Three for quite some time, replacing some trail that was cracked asphalt with eight-feet cement pathways now for pedestrians and bikers. And also replaced Memorial Park and Dodge Street overpass with about $300,000, mostly raised privately, to continue that trail that then goes all the way around Elmwood Park and creates a great loop for our trail system. There is a large section of trail along Happy Hollow Boulevard that is also this cracked asphalt that needs replacing. I would hope by allocating this today, we might encourage all of that to be replaced, but this targets a segmented trail that needs it the worst and makes it a lot safer for pedestrians and walkers and bikers. So that's what number 10 would do. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President, and I want to commend you for your good work that you did prior to me being on the council on working on that trail and this piece as I do my, try to get out and do some semi-daily exercise and walking around Memorial Park and Elmwood. That is certainly noticeable that that little patch that you're talking about fixing with this item number 10 here, that that will make that a smooth trail because there's a tremendous amount of people that use that, the park and the trail. So this will repair that, and it'll make the work that you've done in the past on this will connect and make it better. So I absolutely support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any proponents that want to speak today on number 10?
Good afternoon. I'm Julie Harris from BikeWalk Nebraska, 108 North 49th Street, number 206, 68132. Very quickly, obviously, this is something BikeWalk Nebraska would support. Trails are extraordinarily popular. They're for many reasons, for many wide variety of people. So anything we can do to improve the surface is really critical. Little kids on bikes, skateboards, scooters, people with strollers, other issues, it's really important for us to keep these in good shape. They get a lot of use, and they bring a lot of vitality to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 10? Any other proponents on number 10? Seeing none, any opponents?
Donnie Johnson, 4928 North 52nd Street, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. First of all, before I get into my statement for Mr. President and tell me to stay on this subject, in my hometown, East Texas, where I come from, in 1963, as a third grader, I would like to say my condolences to the Queen of England because they sent a delegation to my hometown, and the Italianos from Rome to buy roses. That's why Tyler, Texas, the road capital of the world. But out of all these budgets we've been hearing, I hear nothing for North Omaha. And Ms. Johnson, she represented Coon Park, and this is where we have a debate at. When I was a kid at Fountainhead in 1963, or '65, I'm sorry, where me and him, Mr. Rowe, went to Central Park, we had a submarine and a yacht club, but we don't have nothing for the kids in North Omaha now. Ms. Johnson, she gave us a certificate from Coon Park, but we can't spend the certificate. Senator Chambers told African South Africa, "Don't send the gold to North Omaha." I tell them in the Senate. So we have to oppose this unless you can put some things in North Omaha. The trails, all these folks are working on this good, but we keep missing out on our Christmas present in North Omaha. Can you fix that problem?
Thank you. I have an opportunity to testify on an item here in a minute, I think. Number 13 when we get to it. All right, any other opponents on number 10 today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
I'll second it. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Item 11, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2023 recommended budget to increase community service programs by $40,000 for Nebraska Center for Workforce Development.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item here is, I guess I'll explain it this way. I got an email from a constituent, asked me to oppose this on the agenda today, and before the meeting, I replied back to him, and I explained to it in a paragraph or two, what the Nebraska Center for Workforce Development and Education does is my friend, Councilman Harding, said it's an investment of $40,000. And what it does, it's 18- to 24-year-olds that are nonviolent offenders that are released from prison. This program is a second chance. Everybody deserves a second chance, and it's a partnership with the building trades in Omaha where these men and women that get the second chance, they prove that they can partner with the building trade, get a job, partner with that building trade. You're earning a good wage, you're getting health care, retirement, things that are productive, you're giving back to society in the form of taxes. There's a tight labor market. Baby boomers are retiring. There's a huge gap. So this is an investment that I'm proud to be associated with, with the labor movement, with helping people, again, it's a second chance, and we're not going to bat 1,000 in this, but the effort is there. We have some talented people that are former folks that work with the parole department in Lincoln that are on the staff here, that do a great job reaching out to help these young men and women. And it also does outreach, a separate part of it is, to junior high, high school, young men and women, boys and girls, to show them what a plumber does, what an electrician does, what an iron worker. These are great jobs. If you don't want to go to a four-year college, you can invest in a building trade job, getting paid while you're working, providing for your family, doing a lot of great things. So Jim Vecchio is here today from the Nebraska Center for Workforce Development and Education. I know it's a mouthful. He's the CEO that can add on a little bit. Just give a brief synopsis, Jim. Welcome here today.
Sure. Thanks for having me.
Jim, I'll start public hearing for proponents, and now, go ahead.
As Councilman Bagley said, my name is Jim Vecchio. I live at 12016 Winward Avenue, Tapewell, Nebraska, 68046, and the company, as he alluded to, is Nebraska Center for Workforce Development and Education. I stand here before you today asking for, as he stated, the $40,000 from the City of Omaha, and I think it was just a short time ago, July 26, when I stood before you for the 2022, and this is proposed for the 2023 calendar year. And I will say that, just alluding to Councilman Johnson, where she had stated during the last meeting that some of the challenges that she faces, or not she, but the participants face within Project Reset, is transportation. And that's where 24,000 of the 40 is allocated to help our participants get to and from work on a daily basis. That's not a free ride, but that's just for those participants that show promise, that are actually willing to work and involved in the trades. We provide them with transportation via either Uber or Lyft from the hire date until they receive their first paycheck. So we want to make sure that they have adequate transportation, that that will allow them to do that. Again, you know, the biggest challenges that we face at the center is even getting the participants to and from our facility to visit with their mentors, to make sure that they have the support system that they need, that they're on track, and that still remains a huge challenge for us. And, you know, when we look at Uber and Lyft as an option, their prices have doubled. So the short ride that used to be $12 across town is now 24, and you look at the participants that we have in the system, you know, the 68 Active, it adds up fairly quickly. So that's what the 24 of the 40,000 would be allocated for. The other 16 would be what we call employment starter packs, where what we're trying to provide is $100, 160 people are going to receive a $100 voucher. And these people, I should say, the participants, are the ones that are going to be active in the trades, and when they, you know, they come through the system, they don't have the means to provide, you know, to even purchase, you know, jeans, boots, a hard hat, tools, a tool belt. So what that would at least, it's not going to pay for the entire setup, but it does offer them a start. So once they complete the Elevate program, and the Elevate program for us is where we take them through a curriculum, if you will, that allows us to make sure that their mindset, and they've got the regular cognitive abilities to make sure that they have, you know, have viable employ, that they can get along with coworkers, they can show up on time, day in and day out, they can take orders from superiors, things of that nature. Once they pass the Elevate system, then they are afforded this voucher that will at least get them, you know, started in their new endeavor. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And if I can, one last thing I'd like to say, thanks, Jim, is when somebody reoffends, they're going back to jail, and the price goes up yearly, if it's $50,000 or $60,000, to incarcerate a young man or woman, to keep him in jail. The successes we have with this investment, again, we don't bat 1,000, but the efforts with professionals dealing with people that have been paroled, that won a second chance, the ones that won a second chance, this program provides it with a job and a mentor and all the things that come with it. It's not easy, but there's a lot of tremendous talented people that work for this center. So I will encourage and hope that everybody supports us today. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today?
Donnie Johnson, 4928 North 52nd Street, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. In supporting this program is two reasons I would like to ask you, Mr. President, is I ask people all the time, why did Matt Dillon hire Festus when he couldn't read or write? I asked it, and they never have the answer for that. And by me asking this question about the Queen, my man, Dian, East Texas, told me that someone said she was drinking too much moonshine. I don't know, but she said the Queen, God bless the Queen of England, because Paul Revere came through there landing in East Texas.
So, Donnie, we got to stay onto the agenda, right? We're talking about workforce development, number 11?
Oh, good. Now, I'm glad you said that because I tell people all the time, who built this country? Thongs. So why not help them? Why didn't send them back to jail or just not help them? I said, you don't like the way the country was built? Because Australia, no, England, send all theirs to England, Australia. So I support this gentleman here and Mr. Bagley program because these guys need a second chance, and would that be very helpful, but can we also get some money in North Omaha while you're doing this?
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is a great example of what preventive measures to reduce crime looks like. So I'm in total support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion to second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton. Palermo. Yes. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Item 12, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2023 recommended budget to increase community service programs by $10,000 for Collective for Youth.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Mr. Bagley.
President, this is a grant that I'm requesting for $10,000 for Collective for Youth, and Megan Addison is here today. She can speak to it if she would come down, if you wouldn't mind, Megan. This program, as I, and all of us do, we get out in the community as councilmembers, and we see behind the scenes what's going on that's making an impact in the lives, as I mentioned in the previous item. This one is particular to children that get, if they don't have guidance after school, this is filling in a gap provided with professionals to give them kids somewhere they can go, be safe, they can get a meal, they can get some tutoring on things. And I know one of the things under the umbrella for Collective for Youth is completely kids, and I visited that. It's on 25th and St. Mary's in my district, and I think I've told this story before, but when I was touring that, it was the old Park East Medical Building for Lutheran Hospital that I worked right out of high school for a couple of years. And it really was amazing to see, they have a room that's like a little mini Target or a Richmond Gorman for those of us who are older, and, you know, kids that don't have a coat or gloves or something to eat or some shoes, they can go in this neat little room, and they got a little shopping cart, and they have tags on the jackets, on the boxes of shoes. So a kid that is poor and whose family is struggling, they have this great program that Megan is involved with, that a kid can go there with a cart and get something off the shelf like it's a brand-new item, which it is. So it instills great pride in young kids that don't know any better that, hey, there's something pretty cool for me out there. So I won't steal the thunder, Megan, for the great work. If you want to just summarize briefly what Collective for Youth does, welcome here today.
Thank you. Again, I'm Megan Addison with Collective for Youth, the executive director, and we are an organization that works with nonprofits to run after-school and summer programs throughout Omaha. We primarily work with Omaha Public Schools and 42 of their buildings, two high schools, nine middle schools, and 31 elementary schools. And all those schools, kids are served a hot meal after school, they get enrichment activities that are ran by professionals who have been well-trained, partially through us and their organizations, and they also get opportunity to really explore, what do they want to do, what do they like, where do they want to be when they grow up? So it's that prevention service that is primarily focused in North and South Omaha, east of 72nd Street, really targeting families and children that need it the most and that really need that recovery time. We're talking about post-COVID, but kids' learning has been lost. So after-school programs provide that time where kids get to learn more, they get to experience opportunities from other nonprofits in our community that bring in experts like The Rose, STEM Fields, sports, you name it. If there's a partner who does it, we work with them and we bring them in. We bring them in under our umbrella to make sure kids have the best access and the highest quality program after school. It shouldn't matter where a kid goes to an after-school program, but that, as long as it's high-quality with caring adults, and that's what makes the difference, so that those kids can meet the outcomes and the goals that all of us adults want them to meet as they grow up. I thank you for your time today, and the investment from the city is leveraged with philanthropy dollars, federal dollars, and even some state dollars to really provide high-quality programs for students.
Thank you. Any other proponents today that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I'll just add my support for this item, too. I was in the same briefing that Councilman Bagley was with Megan and others quite some time ago now, and we were all touched by what we learned about the mission, but Councilman Bagley in particular, I think, was touched, so I'm pleased to see him follow up with this budget amendment as well.
Thanks, and I'll make a motion to approve this, Mr. President, and I actually ran into Megan at the 311 concert last weekend, so.
Well, then I better second it.
Appreciate that.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero. Item 13, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2023 recommended budget to increase community service programs by $50,000 for Keep Omaha Beautiful.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is to approve $50,000 for the purpose of trees to be planted up and down the boulevards in District Two, and that will be ushered in by Keep Omaha Beautiful, and that organization is very notable for its impact and its ability to plant trees and help with the economy, help with the omission of carbon monoxide throughout the city of Omaha. But I would like to say this because this proposal did not come from me directly, it came from the community, the community itself. And so we have an individual that submitted a letter in support of this notion, and what she says here is, why trees? I'm glad you asked. Trees help clean the air we breathe, filter the water we drink, and provide habitat to over 80% of the world's testoral biodiversity. On a larger scale, forests provide jobs to over 1.6 billion people, absorb harmful carbon from the atmosphere, and are key ingredients in 25% of all medicines. They are also aesthetically pleasing and provide us materials to build. Nebraska has approximately 470,000 acres of community forests. A large and diverse number of tree species are found in the community forests, with the typical forest resource domination by hackberry, red mulberry, Siberian elm, and others. In Lincoln and Omaha, the state's two oldest cities, the most common species are hackberries and other trees. In 2010, Nebraska Forest Service inventories and calculation using U4, which is Urban Forest Effects Model, estimated that approximately 13.3 million trees were in Nebraska communities. Collectively, Nebraska community forests have an average tree cover of 11.3%, with a total value of environmental, social, and economic benefits to the state of 9.7 billion. How many trees are planted each year in Nebraska? Each year, Nebraska Natural Resource Districts help landowners plant more than a million trees throughout the state. And she goes on and on and on with different statistics about the value of trees. But we have a number of neighborhood associations in District Two that have cried out for the opportunity to see trees planted up and down the boulevard. This would provide beautification to an area of Omaha, Nebraska that many times... But we have a number of neighborhood associations in District 2 that have cried out for the opportunity to see trees planted up and down the boulevard. This would provide beautification to an area of Omaha, Nebraska that many times has gone neglected, forgotten. And we believe that this, the tree planting will be symbolic of restoring hope to a community where we have high poverty and we have high crime. I know that everyone in this room is very sensitive to the number of shootings, the number of incidents where it has not gone very favorable to us as citizens. But I believe that we all can agree that when we start doing things as a community to uplift those that are in poverty, to see a different direction in life, then we all win. So by planting trees on the boulevard is symbolic to restore hope to a community that in most cases has gone forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be, I make a motion to approve this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll second that. Any other proponents that want to speak today?
Hi, my name is Hannah Renaud-Ganley, and I live at 4535 Hickory Street, 68106. And I am the interim executive director of Keep Omaha Beautiful. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss our Trees for Omaha program, and we've been implementing the program since 2018 to combat tree loss as resulting from the Emerald Ash Borr beetle in Omaha. We work closely with the City of Omaha and the Parks and Rec Department on this program, and it's been a great partnership. This program is spread throughout all districts of Omaha, and to date, we have planted 2,987 trees. There are still lots of opportunities to plant strategically placed additional trees, and we appreciate the opportunity and the support of this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Hello, Luke Schror, 2522 South 33rd Street. I'm a big supporter of this. I'm glad you brought up the Emerald Ash Borr because I was going to do the same thing. We've got pine borer and Dutch elm disease, so just in my own neighborhood from my front yard, I have watched trees come out this summer. And one of the things that made Hanscom Park area in the past a notable neighborhood was their tree-lined streets. And as I look diagonally across, we've lost almost all of our trees across the street. So anytime we can promote planting trees along boulevards, that helps with the heat island effect that all the concrete in cities have. And again, riding my bike and walking, it is a noticeable degree difference when you get underneath a tree. So I absolutely, I could go on and on, but I won't. The broken windows theory, I have it written down here. If we, if you are familiar with the broken windows theory, if downtown looks like crap, there's broken windows and trash, people treat things like they're trash. But when you go through and you fix things and you plant trees and you look like you're caring about something, the public starts to care about it. So in neighborhoods that have been underserved for a long time, trees will help that. And then to put a button on it, trees are also a safer thing. If a car goes off out of control, that is, the area behind a tree can stop a moving vehicle, so it creates little safe pockets in addition. So benefit after benefit, absolutely support this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents.
Donnie Johnson, 4928 North 52nd, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. You know, I was listening to this conversation about trees, and I was thinking about when I was in the African continent. We got so many trees in North Omaha, it's almost a jungle. We don't need trees, we need Mr. Warren Buffett and put another Dairy Queen over there, or somebody, Hy-Vee in North Omaha. I don't know if we need anymore. They could plant all those trees where they got all those cornfields. And also, you could set aside some money, so when the Unicam and Lincoln get their act together, to set aside some money so we can get us a medical marijuana license and make some money. This stuff here about growing trees, it's plenty of auctions out there. The last storm we had, we still trying to clean up those trees. So why are we spending money on that? We need jobs and we need investments in North Omaha. Preferably, the council can look at that. And back to my friends at Rome, who come to my town in East Texas to buy the beautifulst roses in the world, we need that type of development.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? It's number 13. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. There's been a motion in a second. I'll just say I'm pleased to second this. I agree with all the benefits Ms. Johnson just described, and I'm also pleased to see Keep Omaha Beautiful and its new interim director here as a partner. I've had some budget amendments in the past where they were also the partner in replanting trees and did a very effective job throughout the community. And I think this targeted what is already a great boulevard but can be so much better and have all the benefits described by some of the proponents here today, including beautification and pride and crime reduction, and certainly environmental benefits are, make this a great proposition. Seeing no further lights? Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Item 14, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2023 recommended budget to increase community service programs by $50,000 for youth sports.
Public hearing in vote on number 14 is today. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. So those here in attendance, one of two things, you're looking at the agenda saying, when am I coming up next? Or you're saying, wow, these city council members really know their districts. And sitting here, that's exactly what I thought, the second one, we really know our districts. This is such a small percentage of the overall budget that we're taking from this contingency fund to make differences in the community. So if you didn't read the agenda, if you want to know what part of the city it's going to help, I'm going to tell you. I'll help you out. For me, when I hear news stories and reports of possible uptick in crime and things that we deal with throughout the city, like I've heard and seen and witnessed this year, for me, it always goes back to the kids. It's always been about kids and jobs, but it really goes back to the kids. I don't expect any of these groups that I have here today for this resolution to be here because, to be honest, most of them don't even know. This is what we know as representatives of who can make a difference. And the difference that these groups make across the city, north, south, east, and west, are groups that deal with soccer, football, baseball, cheerleading, biking, and walking trails. And again, if you haven't heard me say it before, when we invest in kids, we invest in our future. So this is a very, very small portion of the budget that will definitely help the way our city goes. So I'd hope to have the support of my colleagues, and I'll motion to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. I'll now move to proponents of number 14. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll be happy to support this today for my colleague, Councilmember Palermo. I know with pace, I was able to go down at Easter, and they had the Easter egg hunt in Spring Lake Park. And I think all of South Omaha, every youth was there, and there was more eggs than there was kids. So the work that is done by these groups that make a difference, the little ripple in people's lives, it's more than a ripple, I think. But I know, and I'll, Councilmember Palermo, he actually drives his, I think he's got a golf cart, he goes over to that park and cleans it on his own. He drives that golf cart around. So anyway, I'm glad to support this today, and as I was the rest of these excellent proposals. It is a small amount of money, but it is an investment. I mean, compared to the overall budget, it's a small amount. But you can see that we've invested our time knowing our community, like Vinnie said, and my other colleagues, it's a good investment, and I'm glad to support this today. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights? Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution that the Omaha City Council reaffirms its support for the development of a climate action plan for the Omaha metropolitan area and requests the mayor and the finance director to introduce a 2022 budget transfer ordinance to fund the professional services of a consultant prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Public hearing in vote on number 15 is today. I introduced this resolution, so let's give a brief introduction as well. This would reaffirm the city council's support for a climate change action plan. Almost every city our size has already done a climate change action plan to assess our current environmental footprint, to identify specific goals, to reduce our carbon emissions and reduce our impact on our environment as a good environmental steward at the city level, but also for our state and for our country and for our planet. There are many things a city does every day that impacts carbon emissions, whether that's our police and firefighter forces, or our snowplows, or we have done some things positively to increase recycling rates and to change over our LED lights throughout the city on all of our streetlights. But we need a comprehensive plan to bring that all together. And that's what the city council supported doing about a year ago now. And we're reaffirming that support here with some frustration, I would say, on my part in the respect that we have not yet seen a request for proposal to get that project moving that really should have been done before now over the last year. And even when that does get issued, we all know that might take another year or year and a half to actually have the plan that we can all hopefully support and begin working on these critical issues. So this just reaffirms our support for that and try to prioritize this issue as we should. It suggests a transfer from 2022 because I want it to happen now, not in 2023. But the city council does not have that ability. It's just affirming our support to fund something like that if needed, and I think we should, this year. But if not this year, as soon as possible, 2023, if that's when it occurs. There is currently about a $15 million estimated budget surplus in 2022, so it's not monetarily an issue, it's more of a timeframe issue. And so I hope we reaffirm our support for this today and to keep this moving as quickly as possible. Having said that, we'll now move to proponents that might be here today in the audience. And I know we have some proponents by Zoom that we'll get to after that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kathy Jeffers, 5706 South 173rd Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68135. Thank you, Councilman, for your diligent insight to work for the health and welfare of the current residents and those who will come to call out Omaha home. I'm a proponent of Pete Festerson's resolution. I support it's time to begin to develop a necessary and to address this Omaha-changing climate, which affects us all locally with extreme weather events. By being proactive to begin planning the climate action plan with the financial assistance from the city's government budget, this will allow us to estimate costs for the future funding sooner and will be a part of the solution for making a positive future in Omaha as well as being a leader for the state of Nebraska. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hi, everyone. Sarah Cohen, 1542 Seward Street. I'm here today to speak in favor of this resolution because of the opportunities that it presents. As a mom of young kids, I care deeply about the world that we're passing on to them. And I also want them to grow up in a city that's thriving economically, culturally, and with regard to the well-being of the people who live here. And this resolution is a step toward that. I'm going to talk about why a climate action plan is a good idea and also why this resolution is the thing to do. Developing a climate action plan like Lincoln and so many other cities has some obvious benefits. It will help to protect our community from threats to health and safety like floods and extreme heat waves, and it will limit the city's own climate impacts. But the benefits go beyond that. Actions like switching to electric city vehicles or making city buildings more energy-efficient will help to make the air we breathe cleaner for everyone, and this is especially important for kids. One in 10 kids have asthma, and climate change makes that worse. Finally, a climate action plan can help Omaha to grow economically. But why this resolution and why now? It's been 10 months since this council voted to develop a climate action plan, but after 10 months, we still haven't seen a request for proposals. That delay is inexcusable. And I said that this resolution represents an opportunity. That's because it takes advantage of a budget surplus from this current fiscal year, not 2023, and it uses a small portion of it to hire a consultant so that we can start developing a plan. We owe it to our kids and to our whole community to do something now. And so I'm urging you to vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
David Corbin, 1002 North 49th Street. I'm also the Energy Chair of the Nebraska Sierra Club and taught energy policy at Creighton University after I retired, a public health professor at UNO. I'm circulating the op-ed, the Midlands Voices that I had published in the World Herald, so I won't go over all of those things again, but I would like to offer that if you want, I have links for all of these ideas that are there if you want to see what they've done in other places. It is frustrating that this has taken so long. Lincoln's already got their plan in place. As mentioned earlier, Omaha in the top 50 populated cities were one of 15 that doesn't have a plan. You all know, and I know, Councilwoman Johnson testified before OPPD board and that they have planned now to burn coal in North Omaha Plant for three years, more than what they had promised earlier. This takes a big toll on North Omaha, and that is even more reason why you need to have a climate action plan. Over the years, James Hansen, who was one of the first people to testify before the Congress, a climate scientist warning us about, this is in the 1980s, about the hazards of climate change. We've had Michael Mann here, we've had Bill McKibben here, we've had Admiral Dennis McGinn, a former Secretary of the Navy for Energy, and Naomi Oreskes, all internationally known people and telling us what we are trying to tell you now. We need to have an action plan, and we need to act now. We know that the, in my op-ed, we talk about the over-billion-dollar cost and the homeland security risk when the Offutt Air Force Base was flooded and when the National Guard was flooded. This is not just something we're making up. This is something that the Department of Defense has named as a top priority. The Board of Health has named racism as a public health issue, and the impact on North Omaha of the plant is another thing where equity comes into the picture. And so it does require a plan. It requires a plan where there is teamwork, as I mentioned at the end, and that teamwork needs to be organizations that have been involved in this issue for decades, like the Sierra Club and like OTAC and other organizations. So I strongly urge that you pass this. It's way past the time that it should have been done. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents in the audience?
John Pollak, 1412 North 35th Street, Omaha. I'm speaking to you as a meteorologist. I'm only representing myself today, but I was a weather forecaster for over 30 years with the National Weather Service in Omaha before retiring. I've been following Omaha's weather closely since 1978, and I know a lot of its weather history before that. Right now, Omaha has what is best described as a climate inaction plan. It consists of business as usual combined with ignoring not only climate change but also lessons from past events. When the inevitable disasters strike, we mourn the casualties, clean up, and pat ourselves on the back for being so good at helping each other. Prevention or loss avoidance don't enter our consideration. It's time for a change. It's time to plan for climate change. The weather events of the past few years contain clear warning signs to a meteorologist. Summer heat domes have been getting stronger and lasting longer. What will happen here when we get an unlucky roll some July? It might be hotter than 1934, when we had eight consecutive days with highs above 100 and lows in the 80s. What's our plan then? Do we have a way to get people without cars to cooling centers? Do we even have a garbage contract that conflicts to overnight collection during dangerous heat? Water is a worse problem than heat. We keep putting in more buildings and flood planes than act surprised when they get flooded. The four inches of rain in an hour that trapped people in an elevator in downtown was supposedly a 100-year flood. Funny, I've seen a number of those in my time, and I'm not that close to 100 yet. We ought to be thinking about a lot more than four inches. The world record for rainfall in under an hour is over 10 inches, and that was only 100 miles from here in northwest Missouri. Flash flooding kills people when roads are inundated. It also endangers first responders. River flooding has also been getting worse. It ruins structures and lives. We need to stop putting people and buildings in harm's way when we can avoid it. There are a lot of opportunities to reduce our carbon footprints, be prepared, save lives, and reduce damage. I've only mentioned a few. We need a climate action plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents in the audience.
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I guess I have to appreciate that you have this resolution on your agenda, trying to figure out what's going on with this. Doesn't sound like you can fund anything that resembles a climate action plan. I don't know what the public comments have been. I don't know what your public hearings have been because on social media, I heard there was something going on with this, that there was a public comment to the city government. And if that's what's going on, I encourage you guys to only listen to people who are talking about a climate action plan, a CAP. That is what we should be doing during this time, formulating it now, I guess. We've known about the dangers since the 80s. Congress was getting information on that. There is information about the warming of Nebraska. I want to show you guys what that looks like. This is from 1900 to 1910. There is an increase. Oops. I think you saw the increase there of the climate. This is not a weather situation. This is a climate situation where year after year, there's a progression to a bad situation with global warming. The planet needs global warming in order for life to survive, but this progression, this upward tick, is human-made. It's human activity. I think we can be beyond that discussion, council members, that this is happening. I'd like to be where you're discussing about emission inventories for Omaha, actual concepts, actual components that will be part of an action plan. I've got a resolution here that you passed a year ago. It's two pages. This is what the city is going to use, one action, to get to a climate action plan. Today, you're talking about getting a consultant to formulate a climate action plan. I'm concerned that that's going to take over the process, that's going to outline the process by which the city is going to follow. I don't think that's necessary. You're probably going to have a lot of RFPs for consultants on this. So listen to people that are going to talk about an action plan, and I'm trying to make a point here.
Luis, I'm going to have you summarize. We have some more speakers here.
I don't know what's going on, Mr. Festerson. That's my point. Like, I don't know.
I'll help you understand here in a minute. How's that?
Yeah, I know. I've been studying this, researching this, and I don't know where you're at at it. And I'm telling you guys that if we're going to go to a consultant to not limit the process through that, we need to be listening to people who support an action plan and don't want to mitigate the impact that we can have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other proponents in the audience?
Luke Shoror, 2522 South 33rd Street. I absolutely am in favor of this because I think if you do hire somebody or get a consultant or whatever, they will come to the conclusion that I'm going to be hounding you guys on every chance that I can until you realize that suburban sprawl is not beneficial to us. Our highly sought-after places in town are mixed-use, walkable, bikable areas. I biked here today because I live in Hanscom Park, which is close, and we keep expanding the borders of the city and making these spaghetti streets on the periphery of the city. I grew up on a Hereford cattle ranch, and years ago, they found out that no-till is a better method because it reduces runoff. And so my family made a plan, and they changed how they were doing business. My brothers are planting cover crops right now. You make a plan, and you follow it when you see that things aren't working. And we have years of information coming in that says that suburban sprawl actually is a negative on a city budget, and places that are more dense and urban subsidize things like suburban sprawl. So you can look into it. A good example, if anybody at home is watching, or if you guys want to, Not Just Bikes is a YouTube channel, and they do a phenomenal job of explaining things that I can just muddle through up here and try to get you to understand. But in your free time, look up things like Not Just Bikes on YouTube because they boil things down into a more comprehensible way of looking at things. And climate change is real, and we're about to have opponents come up here and say that it's not. But regardless, we have actions that we can do that's going to help everybody out, and that's my time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents in the audience? See, now we're going to move to proponents on Zoom. I'll just do them in order that are listed on my sheet here, starting with Mark Higgins. I'll get you off mute here in a second. There you go.
Good afternoon. Mark Higgins, 1218 South 116th Avenue, Omaha, 68144. I am a member of the Citizens Climate Lobby Omaha chapter. I support this resolution, and I hope the mayor quickly responds by transferring funds into the 2022 budget. However, the landscape has changed in the past month since the Federal Inflation Reduction Act was signed into law, and there's a need for great urgency. The climate and clean energy provisions in the act make billions of dollars available that may benefit both existing city programs and likely would apply to action items developed within the climate plan. So it's my hope that those tasks for the preparation and implementation of the climate plan are steadying the act to identify opportunities for the city. Categories of funding include high-efficiency, affordable housing with renewable energy, clean heavy-duty vehicles such as buses and garbage trucks, and tree planting, which may be relevant to the previous Boulevard planning resolution and could be a good example of potential funding for an existing program. 1.5 billion will be allocated to the U.S. Forest Service, who will then, in partnership with state agencies, national partners, and community tree groups, implement the program. So perhaps the Keep Omaha Beautiful Trees for Omaha program is or should be one of those community groups and has the ability to craft an application that would secure To that point, funding won't go just to those with needs, but will favor those who have identified government and private partners, have a record of success, and who are organized to accept, distribute, track, and evaluate the results of the funded programs. So I thank you for this opportunity to speak, and again, I encourage you to approve this resolution and to expedite the entire climate action plan process.
Thank you. The next proponent we have by Zoom is Mark Welsh. Try that, Mark.
Okay, there we go. Hello, my name's Mark Welsh. I live at 5611 Howard Street in Omaha, 68106. I'm the Omaha Coordinator of Nebraskans for Peace, and I want you all to support Pete Festerson's effort to get Mayor Stothard to do the right thing and to fund the climate action plan right now. We've waited over a year since Mayor Stothard said she was starting this process. We can't wait any longer for this process to start. We need action to pay to create the climate action plan. Now, I've searched the 2023 city budget, and I could not find the word "climate" in it. Is there any money in the 2023 budget to pay for a climate action plan? If not, I think you need another resolution next week to add it to that budget for next year. If today's Mayor Stothard doesn't release the RFP soon, I ask Pete Festerson, when Mayor Stothard is out of town next and you are the mayor, would you please release the RFP and start that bidding process? You have that power. I hope you will use it. The city council should not wait for the climate action plan to be completed before taking the most effective action to reduce the CO2 emissions. I'd like you to adopt the most up-to-date international building codes that will make new buildings at least 10% more efficient than our current building codes. The existing city master plan has other items in it that could be done as well. The world continues to get hotter, and the climate is changing more, in part because the city of Omaha, businesses, and individuals are putting more CO2 in the air by burning fossil fuels. This is hurting the people in Omaha. It's hurting the businesses in Omaha and throughout Nebraska with more frequent, hotter weather, longer and wider droughts, and larger floods. We simply can't afford to wait. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next proponent is Megan Smith. Hi.
My name is Megan. Hi there. My name is Megan Smith. I reside at 368 North 41st Avenue, 68131. I am a concerned citizen, the owner of an Omaha-based recruiting firm honored to promote the city of Omaha to prospective candidates, the advantages of relocating to Omaha. And I'm a volunteer with the Omaha Chapter of the Citizens Climate Lobby, which is a nonpartisan organization with 600 members in the chapter, the Omaha Chapter, devoted to advancing smart climate policy. I want to start by thanking Mayor Gene Stothard for committing to writing and releasing a request for proposal that will start the process of hiring a company to write the city's climate action plan. But I'd also like to further thank you, Councilman Pete Festerman, for bringing into the city council a request to allocate funds in the city's 2022 budget for the development of a regional climate action plan. The city of Omaha is the only city of its size without an active commitment to creating a city climate plan, according to the nonprofit organization Zero Energy Project. The list is comprised of American cities either committed, developing, or implementing a climate action plan, approximately 600 to date. Three Nebraska towns make the list: Crete, Lincoln, and Omaha, with Omaha being the only city on the entire list as behind and without either of the aforementioned designations. According to both Forbes Magazine and Ballipedia, updated February of 2022, Omaha doesn't even make the list of the U.S.'s 50 largest cities with climate action plans. Moreover, according to the Center for Climate and Energy Solutions, 33 states have released a climate action plan or are in the process of revising or developing one. The state of Nebraska is not one of them. As a riverfront city, Omaha is obviously vulnerable to flooding, and we need an action plan that will help preempt costly damages that are associated with future extreme weather events. Climate change mitigation and adaptation is an investment that will cost less than dealing with the cleanup and damage if we are unprepared. We have only the many local examples, as well as the many recent examples from countries all over the world, to demonstrate this fact. A smart climate action plan not only mitigates disaster, but it makes Omaha a competitive and compelling market. It retains and attracts young talent to Omaha, the future of our workforce that in the 18- to 30-year-old age range cites environmental and climate-related concerns in four of its top 10 most important issues they will vote on, and it creates economic opportunity by investing in innovation, shovel-ready projects, and job creation. The 2022 budget, as has already been stated, does not mention funding towards a climate plan. I urge the city council to approve funding in this budget for the plan now in this year's budget. Eliminating funding in this year's budget will push the whole process backwards, leaving the city of Omaha unprepared for climate disasters and in a reactive position, further risking more economic losses. Thank you all for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. The last proponent we have by Zoom is Liz Vizi.
I'm Liz Vizi. I'm at 912 North 49th Street in Omaha, and I'm a member of the Sierra Club, and I support the city moving forward on climate action and the mayor moving money from the 2022 budget to support this. You know, I heard the mayor during her campaign mention a commitment to climate action, but I've seen, you know, little action since her election, and I've heard that this RFP has been drafted for months. I think approving this climate action plan, RFP, would be a really good step for the city to take, towards taking some action. It would help align the city with OPPD, local companies, nonprofits, and others with climate commitments. Young people, as was just mentioned, want to see climate action, so it could help the city address the mayor's stated goal of stopping the brain drain and creating more opportunities in Omaha. Climate action could support energy efficiency, local clean energy generation, electric vehicles, local energy storage, increased public transit, more options for safe, active transportation, and more. And these actions will bring more local jobs, lower our energy bills, increase our resiliency, and generate more local clean energy to power buildings and transportation.
Thank you. We'll now move to opponents. Any opponents in the audience?
David Bagley, 4611 South 96th Street. I'd like to start my remarks by urging Councilman Festerman not to commit an insurrection in a not to commit an insurrection and a coup d'etat against the mayor. I think that's a really bad idea. I'm also going to preface my remarks here by saying, I'm going to give you some facts, and, and I'm going to speak frankly. And I'm also going to tell you some things you probably don't know. But the preface here is the late Nebraska Supreme Court Justice John T. Grant, Councilwoman Melton is too young to probably know him, but he was famous for saying, "I think we should be able to disagree without being disagreeable." So I'm not here to be disagreeable. I'm here to disagree with the proponents. So I gave to your secretary a proposed resolution whereby I set out the facts, which are, now Omaha has half a million people. The country of China has 1.4 billion people. China is building 81 gigawatts of new coal-fired power plants and is planning to construct another 247 gigawatts of coal-fired power plants. Councilman Begley knows how much power OPPD produces. It's insignificant compared to what China is producing via coal. I would also tell you, and this is not well-known, that OPPD has a net zero carbon plan by 2050, which their consultant has told them is going to cost $28 billion. OPPD only has revenue of $1 billion. Our rates will triple if we head down this foolish, and I stress foolish, and wasteful net zero carbon plan. Now, the World Herald said that this plan is supposed to cost $200,000 to $300,000. And that's just an entire waste of money. And I would submit to you that the purpose of this plan is for two reasons. Number one is for these proponents to feel good about saving the planet Earth. You know, as I say, save the planet Earth, that's just ridiculous. Omaha is not going to do anything to save the planet Earth. And the other thing is, and this is the frank thing that you need to realize, yes, the city of Lincoln has a Climate Action Plan. Who wrote it? Verdis Group here in Omaha. Verdis Group here in Omaha will bid on the Climate Action Plan. Verdis Group is owned in part by Craig Moody. Craig Moody is a Democrat who's elected to the Omaha Public Power District Board, and he's also constituent of Councilman Festerson's. So I would submit to you that this is really kind of a dim Chicago-style payoff to, to Craig Moody for $300,000 to write some kind of plan that says, "We need to drive electric cars." Finally, in conclusion, I would submit to you that, you know, Councilwoman Johnson said, "Omahans are concerned about crime." I see things about shootings in the World Herald all the time. Councilman Palermo said, "Yeah, we know our districts." Councilman Begley lives in the Holy Cross area, apparently. That's where I went to school. I've lived all over the city, and I can tell you, you don't have to take a poll, what's your number one concern in Omaha? Public safety. It's not blowing, and I do emphasize blowing, completely wasting $300,000 on a Climate Action Plan. People are concerned about safety. They're not worried about saving the planet Earth in the year 2100, maybe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Council President, Council Members. My name is Andrew Sullivan of 7748 Western Avenue. I am a climate change atheist. The false idea of man-made climate change is over 100 years old, is a garbage theory used to market goods to the public, such as windmills, solar cars, solar panels. These products are indulgences to supposedly keep you out of a climate hell, sold just like the indulgences of the old Catholic Church centuries ago. If carbon is a deadly problem, Omaha would be building a nuclear power plant, which produces no carbon emissions. If Omaha can spend over billions of dollars to prevent poop and storm water from mixing, why not a nuclear power plant to supposedly save the planet? Carbon is merely plant food and a minor greenhouse gas. When you see a cloud in the sky, you see the most volatile, important greenhouse gas called water vapor. Water is what climate is about, not carbon. There are two things the city can do about weather-related issues, and many people testifying today mentioned some of these. First, there should be better mitigation of stormwater to prevent flash flooding in low-lying areas. Unfortunately, the city has not made as much effort on this matter as it should. Councilman Begley was on the NRD board, and he probably has stories to tell on this. Second, the city should do more to convince residents to get rid of derelict silver maple trees or maintain them regularly. I love trees, but there are some trees that are just not fit to stand. These trees grow fast, break easily. With every storm, over 1,000 Omaha households go without power in large part because of silver maple trees breaking. Councilman Palermo, who runs a tree-cutting service, can attest to this and probably can make some recommendations in that area. Taking care of these mayors does not require a six-figure salary job or a coordinator or advisor. Instead, someone needs to just coordinate various government entities to take action where needed. Furthermore, the city must not let Facebook-type junkies drive public policy as OPPD has. Censorship is widespread, but this is only half the problem. That's why I'm wearing this shirt today. The users are a problem as they frequently block and troll each other, which ruins proper public discussion and results in malinformation. People should read nonfiction books, such as Fossil Future by Alex Epstein, instead of worrying on Facebook about climate disasters. With this in mind, I hope you will really let this proposal go and start rethinking your stance on this topic, because a lot of the members that I've heard today speak at this forum really potted into some stuff that has been rebutted in numerous books by scientists, specialists, philosophers, and other people that have experience in astronomy, earth science, and other specialties. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents today?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue. Omaha 68132. Indefinitely opposed. Number one, it doesn't tell us what you're going to charge us for a Climate Action Plan. Number two, I don't think we can do that. I think there's only one supreme being around here that can do that. Number two, you are listening to the National League of Cities, and you are also spending a bunch of money to pay dues to the National League of Cities. The progressives in the League of Cities are here today in force. You must have brought them down by bus. Some of them are on Zoom. They are controlling you, but you owe it to us, the voters, the citizens, not to them. We do not need any Climate Action Plan. There's only one person that can deal with that. You cannot stop a cow from producing methane gas. You cannot shape the clouds yourself. You cannot wring the water out of it yourself. So stop thinking that you can, and stop listening to these people with their not-so-scientific science. Go camp out some night and think about it. Look at the stars. It's absolutely out of control here. Now, yeah, you're coming back. It was kind of a, an amendment from last week. But next week, you'll come in with an amendment of the whole that'll change it and give them exactly what they want. And they want it right now. Absolutely have to do it right now, ladies and gentlemen, or the chicken-looking guy that said the sky is falling will come true. I might walk out this door right now or be escorted out if he's ready, and one of those peregrine falcons up there might pick my eyeballs out. Are you going to spend money to prevent that? We need some netting to protect me as I'm being escorted out. And finally, I am ready. My, my gitch is ready. Mr. Festerson, excuse me, you make up your own rules as you go along. This was not supposed to be a presentation. I didn't bring a speech. These other people brought lots of speeches. I'm timing how, see how long I last today, but I'm also timing to see if I get my five minutes. Everybody's been off-topic, so I'm off-topic. And thank you very much for not ordering me out, because he has a better job to do. Thank you.
Any more opponents in the audience? Seeing non-public hearings closed, I'll just simply close by saying that I think, you know, why reaffirm this and why do it now? I think it's because, the short answer is, it's taken so long, and there's really no excuse why this hasn't started in the last 10 months. But then, secondly, as some testifiers acknowledge, there is a huge opportunity here for federal funds, should we have a plan to help leverage Omaha in this respect. And then, lastly, there was no other issue we heard more about at our public hearing on the budget than the climate action and the desire of especially young people to see this move forward in our city. They want to live somewhere where they understand that environmental stewardship is a core value. And they observed it wasn't in our 2002 budget. There was no RFP yet, and it was not in our 2023 budget. And they were right. So this is an attempt to address what we heard from the public that day as well. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Festerson. Mr. Warren, if you could come up, please. I wonder if you could give us an update from, from the mayor's office, where, where you are on this.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of Omaha City Council. Thomas Warren, Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham. I'll provide a brief update on where we are with the Climate Action Plan and answer any questions that you may have. As you may know, the Metro Smart Cities Advisory Committee is chaired by Mayor Jean Stothard and Derek Leathers with Werner Enterprises. It's composed of representatives from the various city departments, our utilities, Omaha Chamber Commerce, Omaha By Design, MAPPA, as well as other community stakeholders. The advisory committee will meet on September 21st. They have been soliciting input on the request for proposal. The request for proposal should be voted on and approved at the September 21st meeting to hire a consultant. It will likely take a few months for the consultant to be hired, which means that we will be into 2023 before we can hire such a consultant, which would prohibit us from funding that position in the 2022 fiscal year. That requirement, we can't encumber funds from the previous fiscal year for funds that will be dispersed in the next subsequent year. So it will likely be 2023 before we actually hire the consultant. Then the consultant will be hired to prepare the plan. That plan obviously will form what will be the strategy to address this very important issue. And at that point, we will consider the cost and the funding source for funding the Climate Action Plan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion? Or Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
I apologize. A little late. Mr. Warren, if you could stay up. So I guess I just, because I want to be clear. I was confused having this on here. Because there is an RFP, it's going to be issued, I mean, it'll be issued end of September, beginning of October?
It's a draft of an RFP that has been circulated. We'll finalize that RFP at the September 21st meeting. Should be approved at that meeting, which we let the RFP then solicit proposals from consultants at that point.
And, and so that'll take a couple of months, because it has to go out, because you want to get as many proposals as possible, correct?
That's correct.
You haven't decided on the consultant, so you want to make sure that we're selecting the best one, not necessarily just the one that wrote Lincoln's? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so then, once that happens, I mean, we wouldn't pay for it until 2023?
That's very likely.
Okay. So, right now, this just seems kind of premature or putting the funds in place, because it's not going to be possible for us to do it before, really, before 2023. The council doesn't even meet the last two weeks of December.
Well, we can't take action on this resolution because we haven't hired a consultant yet, and it hasn't been funded. But certainly recognizing the importance of this issue, certainly it is a priority for Mayor Stothard, and we will proceed based on the recommendation of the advisory committee as well as the consultant.
Okay. So I, I guess I'm satisfied with the work that you're doing and this resolution, whether it passes or doesn't pass, you're proceeding all the same.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Tom. I probably should have followed up a little bit with, with some of my questions, which Councilmember Melton did as well, too. So I, I guess my point was, was going to be in asking you those questions about the, the timing of it, and, and Metro Smart Cities asking that question as to where giving us an update. I think you've laid out, you know, kind of the timeline, you know, kind of a best-case scenario from where we are now, and we're not even into 2023 before that could happen. And the meeting is, is a mere eight days away or a week from tomorrow. So I, I'm not sure I see the, the reason for the, the resolution, because I think you're proceeding, it wouldn't do anything to affect the schedule that you're on today, correct?
That's correct. And if I could, you know, part of the delay was attributed to the fact that the advisory committee did consider a regional plan. And for some time, they deliberated over whether or not there would be a regional Climate Action Plan. It was decided and determined that it would be focused on the city of Omaha. Thus, that did create a little bit of a delay. I think now the focus will be on the city of Omaha, and they will proceed accordingly.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Warren, you mentioned the advisory group several times. Can you tell me who is all on the, on the advisory group?
Sure. On the distribution list, there's representatives from the mayor's office, Mr. Jacqueline Morrison, Steve Jensen, representatives from our various city departments, Public Works, James Thaler, our Public Works Director, Bob Stube, Dave Fanslaw, our Planning Director, myself, and Carrie Murphy, representatives from our utilities. Let's see, I mentioned Derek Leathers, representatives from Omaha Chamber Commerce, Olson and Associates, Metropolitan Community College. There's over 20 or more people on the advisory committee.
So you have 20 people? Can you give me the ethnicity?
I don't have the ethnic or racial identifiers for each of these individuals, some of whom I'm acquainted with, others I'm not.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't have that since we're working on diversity now as a city?
I could say that is a very, from looking at it, it's a fairly diverse committee. However, I don't have the specifics on their race and ethnicity, and I don't want to assume as much.
But based upon what you just said, from looking at it, what are the outliers that indicate that it is diverse?
You have diversity based on race and gender.
I'm looking at the city, the people that we serve is very complex. We have various individual groups. We have African-Americans. We have Latinos. We have a lot of people in this city that we serve. So are all those individuals represented in this makeup?
I cannot specifically tell you that there's representatives from each of the racial or ethnic groups that compose the city of Omaha. I can suggest to you that, looking at the list, we do have diversity based on race, gender, ethnicity, geographic areas that they represent, professions, et cetera. But beyond that, without having that specific biographical information, I cannot confirm.
So I can conclude that this climate plan is just about as credible as this notion that we are about to look at changing how we appreciate and value diversity?
Is that your question, or is that a statement?
I'm just saying, if, when we do rubber against the road, we're not seeing any credibility in these things. This is just lip service. So I'm asking, if you're going to have a diverse group of people looking at this action plan, if it's going to be made up of what the city currently make up in terms of its directors, if that's going to be the same model that we play when we have this advisory group for this action plan, then it doesn't really say that we are working toward a diverse representation of what our goals and objectives are for this city.
I would suggest that it is a I would suggest that it is a very representative.
But you can't tell me what that is?
Excuse me, as well as a credible representation based on the composition of this committee.
But still, you can't tell me what those numbers are. So we're just saying?
In my opinion, in my opinion, it's very representative and it's very credible.
In your opinion, you can't tell me the numbers?
I'm not suggesting that I can tell you based on this distribution list that I have in front of me.
Okay, so that makes me question whether or not the validity of this climate action plan as it relates to the board or the advisory board, that it will be reflective of the citizens that we serve in the city of Omaha. It makes me question that. It makes me be concerned. And it makes other people in the city of Omaha be concerned. Do you have anything that you'd like to say to that?
I've just responded. I don't agree with what you're saying.
But you can't give me any numbers regarding the makeup of the board?
Yeah, you know, I can certainly take some time to compile based on what I observe in terms of the race, gender, ethnicity, if we profiled these individuals, their professional backgrounds and qualifications. Again, I do feel that it is a credible advisory committee that could lend their expertise to this very important subject matter.
Some time ago, I met with you and discussed my concern about presenting people on advisory boards here at the city and the makeup not being reflective of the people that we serve. And I continue to see recommendations of individuals looking the same, despite that concern.
The purpose of this.
So I'm concerned about this committee looking the same as we have of other committees that represent the city as well. So that's why I'm asking this question regarding the makeup of this advisory board. We're moving into a new century and we need to have people on these advisory committees that are reflective of the people that are served in the city of Omaha. And they don't look like they're all Europeans, they look different. And these committees need to look different. That's not my concern, that's constituents' concerns in District 2. And I believe that's the concern of the overall city of Omaha, especially when we're moving toward a direction of recognizing how important it is to have diversity amongst the ranks. So I hope this advisory board, since you don't have the information for me to make an informed decision, I hope it is reflective of the people that we serve in the city of Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate your comments, Tom, and the work that the advisory team is doing. This is clearly a hot topic, no pun intended. And I can agree with proponents and opponents on many of the topics, on many of their points. And I think we can plan for contingencies and I think we can mitigate weather events. But as some of the opponents have said, I mean, we're not going to change the amount of rainfall we get, but we can plan for it and act on it. But I appreciate what we're doing. I don't know that I need to vote yes on this because we're already in a position that we're going to have that in place. And so I'll probably vote no. But I just wanted you to know that I appreciate what you're doing and I agree there are things that we can do to mitigate loss. We can do loss prevention, we can do things in our city to help. And I look forward to seeing that plan when it's put in place. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I'll say that we have this in front of us again. I believe we voted on this last year and nothing was really done. I know we gave committees time to get together and that's great, that's what committees are But I sit up here every week with change orders when it comes to funding. And I've sat here over the course of the last six months with the unknown of the library where it seems like it's brought in front of me again for different funding. And I agree with Councilmember Rowe. I listen to both sides, everybody that's talked, that I hear from, and I agree with both sides. But what we need to do is move forward on this to see where we're actually at. I didn't see a dollar amount of moving this forward. So whether the funding takes place in '22 or '23 or '24, the goal is to move forward to see where we're at. And if we say, well, we can't do that because we don't know how much, well, we made a lot of votes up here with not knowing how much something would cost. And that's on the record.
Motion to approve. I'll second. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll also be supporting this today. And I think you've been patient and the council's been patient since I've been on here. This was something we decided, or talked about rather, right after I got on the council, so I'll be happy to support this today going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Mr. President. Yes.
Motion passed four to three. Item 16, a resolution that the Omaha City Council urges the Omaha Streetcar Authority to fully evaluate co-locating a permanent protected bike lane on Harney Street or another location in the redevelopment plan area and to urge Public Works to engage with Metro Smart Cities and BikeWalk Nebraska to evaluate the pilot project and consider options.
Public hearing and vote on number 16 is today. I introduce this resolution together with Councilmember Rowe, so I'll recognize Councilman Rowe for the floor.
Great, thank you, Mr. President.
Again, this is a resolution that we put forward to ask the city to really not ignore the fact that there are multi modes of transportation that we use in the city. And one of them is bikes. And we've got a pilot bike path, a bike trail on Harney Street right now, and it's working, it's working well. And I think all of us would say that that's the fact. My concern in putting this resolution forward, though, is that I know that we're looking at the streetcar on Farnham and Harney and it's a fluid topic. We don't know for sure where that's going to go. I suspect it'll be on Farnham and Harney. And I want to make sure that the bike trail, the Harney bike trail is not forgotten about, is not ignored, but it's something that we are paying attention to. And so that was the reason for the resolution. We didn't put money in there to fund it. We're not saying that we need to permanently put that trail in place and then tear it out in two years. Certainly, that's not the intent. But I think we wanted to communicate to the public and to our people of the city that it is important and that we want to see a bike trail, an east-west bike trail somewhere in the urban core. It doesn't have to be on Harney, it could be on another street, it could be on Leavenworth, it could even be as far north as coming. We don't, I don't know where it needs to go, but I wanted to make sure that we were at least aware of it and we were paying attention to it. And given the fact that we have the streetcar on the table, I wanted to make sure that we didn't lose sight of the importance of the bike trail. It is important. And so I'm going to be voting for it and I would, I'd make a motion that we approve this resolution number 16.
I'll second it. And before I open public hearing, also, as a cosponsor, just thank Councilman Rowe for introducing this and for his work on this. He's been involved in researching multimodal projects all throughout the country. He's gone on some site visits. He's ridden the bike trail and the bike lane himself, I know with his wife, who's an avid biker as well. So I appreciate his interest in pursuing this and I think the way he described this amendment is exactly right. Last year, we did try to move funding in the city's capital improvement program to make the pilot project permanent should it prove its worth. We feel that it has, and I think the evidence has shown that now. And I still think it would have been beneficial to have that funding available now to take our next steps, but that's not what we're doing here. This year, we're saying, we've seen the pilot project, we've evaluated it, it's got a little bit longer to go, but I think we'll hear from proponents here on some pretty convincing numbers. There are some unknown things yet in terms of our public right of way along Harney Street, particularly as it applies to the potential streetcar and how that might work together. So all this resolution says is, hey, we're interested in multimodal opportunities, we think a protected bike lane is a good idea, we should keep it in place while we can until the streetcar gets resolved and figured out, and look to make attempts to co-locate them or find complementary routes where they could exist together and the city should be a funding partner when that occurs. That's all this says. To me, I think this is something we should all be able to do together and it's an attempt to bring us all together on this issue and have some kind of unanimous vote. Having said that, I'll now take the public hearing with proponents.
Good afternoon, I'm Julie Harris with BikeWalk Nebraska, 108 North 49th Street, 68132. We're about six weeks away from the Market to Midtown BikeWay pilot project end date. And as Councilman Festerston just said, it's time to start planning for what the future holds. A quick review of the information we've reported along the way during the pilot. Results from the six-month project evaluation showed a 140% increase in bicycle traffic on Harney after the bikeway was installed and a clear pattern of people shifting their trips, their bike trips, from parallel streets with traditional bike lanes over to Harney's protected bike lane. Feedback gathered from the Downtown and Quarters Business Association, survey respondents, and spontaneous testimonials gathered from riders were almost universally positive. The data at the one-year mark in late July showed a decreased but consistent use of the lane during the winter months, as we expected, but a return to similar patterns to 2021 when the warmer weather arrived. Additionally, Heartland Bike Share reported a 66% increase in use of their bike share stations that were located along the pilot route. And business owners and residents reported calmer and safer traffic flow on Harney. We are currently gathering additional feedback and data for the final evaluation report, but with just six weeks to go, it is clear that the Market to Midtown BikeWay is on track to meet every performance measure listed in the agreement approved by the city council on their vote in April of 2021. As I mentioned in my testimony on June 14th, when the TIF agreement with the Omaha Streetcar Authority was approved, we could not have anticipated that a streetcar could potentially be coming to the same stretch of Harney where we started this pilot project. And obviously, it is a significant factor in determining the future of the bikeway. We were very pleased with the prompt response and dialogue with Omaha Streetcar Authority President Jay Naughtle when we reached out with questions in June, had a great conversation, and we were relieved to have assurances at the June 14th council meeting from Jay when he said, quote, "If the bikeway pilot is successful, we're going to make sure that the streetcar does not bump the bikes." We've done our part. Metro Smart Cities Project, this project was funded with private dollars. We've collaborated with the city, the consultant, and private vendors to build and maintain the lane and collect the data. We have delivered on proof of concept. It is now time to transition this from a pilot project to a permanent facility. And in our mind, this process has two phases. Phase one, as you've heard here, we urge the council to support this resolution so that we can continue to work with the city to create a common sense interim plan to keep the Market to Midtown BikeWay in place and adequately maintained while the planning for the streetcar continues. Given the data we've collected on use, it would be short-sighted and a poor use of resources to have the bikeway removed at the end of October if Harney is going to be torn up for construction in the near future for the streetcar anyway. Phase two, as I've said before, the protected bike lane needs to be included in the overall design of Harney Street should the streetcar route end up being located there. It will never be easier, it will never be cheaper than at that time to construct the bike lane as we do at the same time as the streetcar. If the published costs, estimates of the streetcar are accurate, a rough estimate to design and construct a permanent protected bike lane would be about 1% of the cost of the streetcar. And remember, we have the data to prove the need and use for the bikeway already in hand. In terms of our competitor cities that the chamber lists, Oklahoma City right now has a streetcar, they have 50 bike projects reported in progress, according to a report in 2020. Kansas City is doubling their streetcar route, it's under construction as we speak, and they set a goal and are on track to create 15 more miles of protected bike lanes just in 2022 alone. I'll end by thanking Mayor Stothard and the city and the entire Metro Smart Cities Advisory Group for their support and guidance throughout this pilot project. I'll also add that if given a seat at the table, BikeWalk Nebraska can add tremendous value to the team involved in the design process for the streetcar corridor with our knowledge and the data we've collected during this pilot project. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Other proponents in the audience.
David Corbin, 1002 North 49th Street. I'm proud to say that I was part of the team that wrote the grant for the first bike share program in Omaha that has now grown and grown and grown over the years. And also proud that I was part of a group called Trees for Trails where we planted trees along the bicycle paths. I used the Harney path to get here today and I will use it to go home. Since there was a reference to China earlier, I want to point out that when I was in Beijing, China, for a month, there is no place in the city so many times larger than the city of Omaha that I could not go by bicycle. And it was designed that way. We are a far cry from that, and this is one thing that we can do to help to make a commitment. And it's so pleasurable to be able to ride on a path where I don't have to worry about cars running into me and speeding by and so forth. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents in the audience.
Mr. President, members of the council, city staff, Jay Naughtle, today here as President of the Omaha Streetcar Authority, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village. First, I'd like to say that I think this resolution is a very good idea. It's consistent with the testimony that you've received from not only myself but others involved with the streetcar over the last six months. It's consistent with the conversations Julie Harris and I have had. And I just want to say that for those of us involved with the Streetcar Authority, our interim director, the engineers and designers that are working on the project, very conceptual at this stage, everyone recognizes that there are several forms of transportation that a number of people rely on in the urban core, cars, buses, orbit, bikes, feet, and soon, streetcars. And they're all integral to a great transportation network in the core of any city. I think it's very fair and safe to say that should the streetcar project be built, Farnham and Harney will be the main corridors, whether, in the interest of public safety and all concerned, whether the Harney Street corridor and exactly the location that the protected lane is in now is the best solution, or there are somewhere else in those corridors or other corridors in the urban core, that all kind of remains to be seen. I think the resolution suggests that the Streetcar Authority would sort of be responsible for identifying another area within the urban core where protected bike lanes could take place. That's really not within the purview of the Streetcar Authority. That would really be, I think, led by Public Works and others to do that. Certainly, the Streetcar Authority will weigh in, will help. I know that my former group of colleagues at the Urban Core Committee and the chamber are all very interested in this. There is a new Urban Core Committee, kind of version 2.0. Several people in the room, I think, are involved in that committee. And they're also very mindful of how important this is, of the status of the results thus far. And so I think... And so I think you'll find that the Streetcar Authority will be highly cooperative, and even more so, very interested in finding the very best solutions for not just bikes, but all forms of transportation within the core of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Other proponents in the audience?
Louise Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I think I'm following the discussion, and I want to challenge the Streetcar Authority that once they have their geotechnical analysis, that they can give us a yes or a no on whether the Harney Street Bike Lane is going to be permanent. I think that we can get an answer quicker. I don't think it has to be all the way through until the end, and then there's a public reveal. I think as they do the work, that they can have an answer for that. And I'm thinking that if you just make the Harney Bike Lane permanent, that solves the variable of where a permanent bike lane would be. Think the area there is fine for bike lane. The streetcar has an area that it can encompass. It's in the urban core map that they operate off of, that the Streetcar Authority operates off of. I just think at this point, to make sure that Omaha has protected bike lanes, that you start with this. You can move on to a different area of town, look at the connectivity, but I think we deserve an answer sooner rather than later on the permanency of the Harney Street Bike Lane. Thank you.
Other proponents?
John Pollack, 1412 North 35th Street, Omaha. I would just like to say that as somebody who's been bicycling Omaha streets for several decades now, I appreciate having a protected bike lane. I think this is really important for the safety of bicyclists. It also keeps us out of the way of car traffic, which is good for the other vehicles on the road. Before I was here, I had an appointment at UNMC. I was from there to here and parked in 12 minutes because I used that protected bike lane. That's important transportation for me. It's also my exercise, so it really works. And overall, I want to see this kept. Whether it is on Harney Street or not depends, but we do need a good east-west route through central Omaha that protects and separates traffic in cars and trucks and so forth from bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
My name is Tobin Ellers, 1940, South 62nd Street. And Julie's already covered all the stats and numbers that I was going to bring up. And as a cyclist, like many others in the room, the bikeway is huge. I mean, it gives us a sense of protection, though there is no ultimate protection, but it keeps us, the cyclists, the walkers, gives us a little bit of protection and some space, like we matter. Like, we've talked, I've heard today, multimodal transportation. And when you look at the future, and that 18- to 30-year-old, they want to have multiple options to get around town. They like to walk, bus, public transportation, bike. So I won't bore you with all the other things. There are just so many others, there's so much health, environmental benefits, as far as that's already been brought up today, that there's a lot of great things, economics, and just making it a better, a more livable city. And I will say, this is my very first city council meeting, and I have a much deeper respect for what you men and women do on the council. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Other proponents?
Hello again. Luke Schroer, 2522 South 33rd Street. And I am literally here today times two because of the bike lane. I literally pedaled my little butt down here and used that bike lane, the protected bike lane. But in addition to that, I am here at this city council meeting and not Bellevue City Council meeting because I moved here because of bike lanes. And the infrastructure that you have here, they lost a citizen, and if Omaha continues to do a good job promoting alternate ways to get around, you will keep me. But I also have my eyes on other cities, potentially in the future, which might make some people in here happy, but I'm literally here times two because of that bike lane. And hopefully, if the integration with the, what you call it, the streetcar, thank you. There's some really good infrastructure. How do you turn this on? Is it just?
It'll come on if you have something up there, yeah.
These are better examples of protected bike lanes. I know we call it the protected bike lane, but bollards aren't going to stop a car. So there is better infrastructure. When we start to make that plan going forward with the streetcar, things like these, these mockups are going to be much more helpful. Because, I mean, look at that. That's a beautiful streetcar with grass underneath it. Like, the beauty that it can add to a city is great. And we used to have cities like up above in the yellow. That is the same business with this yellow front down here. And we bulldozed our cities to make room for parking lots. We have prioritized cars over any other form of traffic for years now, and our cities are ugly for it. So it's about time that we start to give some attention to other forms of transportation and get back that beautiful downtown or just any neighborhood in Omaha by having people out and about and not just road rage behind a car. So, big fan. Please keep it going. Also, I got a Heartland Bike membership just because of that also, the accessibility. So, benefits all around. So, thank you much.
Thank you. Other proponents in the audience? And we have three by Zoom.
Hi, I'm Naomi Gilbert, 530 South 51st Avenue, also here today because of the bike lane, popped over from Central High School. I'm a proponent because I love this bike lane and I want to see it survive for as long, for forever, honestly, if it could, but for as long as it's providing to be as useful and necessary for transit in Omaha as it has proven to be. I want to make sure in the process of adding a streetcar that we have a continued, undisrupted protected bike lane service. I don't want to see a protected bike lane closed for months and months and months, leaving people stranded and unable to commute safely. I would love to see plans for making sure that kind of service is uninterrupted. I want to criticize the idea that we can have one protected bike lane running through the urban core, and that is all we can have, and that is all we need for bike transit. We need a robust system of transit that moves people within the urban core but also from outside of it into it. We don't need just one. We need everyone, because when we build bike transit, people come and use it. Right? As we've seen with our data from BikeWalk Nebraska. So I urge you to vote for this resolution. I urge you to go further. Secure, in my mind, I'm not an expert, but securing permanent funding for a bike lane would, seems to me, ensure that there would be not an interruption of service going down Harney Street, and consider a robust networks that can move people all around within it, north and south and east and west, because that is what we need and that is what people are using. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents in the audience?
Is this opposing?
Proponents in favor. Well, then move to Zoom. We have Holly Barrett by Zoom as a proponent. There you go.
Thank you so much for having me participate by Zoom. Holly Barrett, 1403 Farnham Street, number 802. I'm the executive director of the Omaha Downtown Improvement District. I am here today as a proponent, joining the Omaha Downtown Improvement District's voice with those of all of the other advocates who have been urging the city and the Streetcar Authority to continue to the work that the private funders have made possible in the creation of the urban course first protected bike lane. Throughout the pilot, we've already heard that the collected data has proven an increase in ridership along the whole corridor. Anecdotally, those of us living and working in the urban core have also seen an increase in ridership throughout the area on all the current designated bike lanes, in addition to more bikes being used for transit and pleasure on all city streets. With all of the exciting new developments coming online throughout the urban core, we urge the Streetcar Authority to help our cities stay competitive and progressive by continuing the expansion of the improved infrastructure that will appeal to the young people seeking new ways to commute, as well as the young at heart, who have traditionally been the largest demographic of our urban dwellers. All that said, we look forward to a grand future, more active streets, full of pedestrians, vehicles, streetcars, and bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Kalakowski. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Michael Kalakowski, and I'm at 132 North 39th Street in Omaha, 68131. And I am thrilled to hear all of the council's support for this so far about this bike lane. Over the past couple of years, I've become more involved in where Omaha as a city is headed. I think Omaha is a great city, and it's improved tremendously over the years. So we need to keep that going, and many of these initiatives today are doing just that. When we look at other cities, however, with regards to pedestrian and bike infrastructure, road diets, Omaha tends to fall short, and I think that's already been illustrated. People have talked about other cities. So we need to not lose sight of those improvements, and we need to keep taking Omaha to the next level, much like a couple other folks. Right now, I'm downtown working at Union Pacific. I'll be taking the bike lane on my way home right after this meeting. So I'm simply particularly concerned that the bike lane is still considered a pilot project and that it could get lost in the weeds of the streetcar project, and we simply cannot let that happen. Omaha, we don't coast, right? So let's stop being behind the curve when it comes to alternative transportation. Let's lead the way and make sure we prioritize these alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Last proponent by Zoom is Liz Veezy.
Liz Veezy, 912 North 49th Street. I'm the chair of Mode Shift Omaha, and Mode Shift Omaha has been a proponent of this bike project since it was proposed about a decade ago. Thank you to council members Festerson and Rowe, who proposed this resolution to study and fund a permanent bicycle track downtown. It's exciting that we're finally at this point after so many years. I have used the cycle track many times. Mode Shift has hosted a couple events to get folks out and on the cycle track. The Harney Street Cycle Track provides really key east-west biking infrastructure in Omaha and has shown to be a success based on the two reports by Metro Smart Cities and BikeWalk Nebraska that Julie Harris discussed earlier. Also, supporting the Harney Street Cycle Track and expanding, continuing to expand bike infrastructure helps Omaha achieve many of our stated goals as a city. Some of these goals include 200 miles of on-street bike infrastructure from the environmental element of the master plan. We only have 13 or maybe 40 miles, depending on if you count wayfinding now, so we have a long way to go. But this project can help us get those miles of on-street bike infrastructure and get closer to 200. As I mentioned earlier, around the climate action plan, stopping the brain drain and creating a place where younger, a vibrant place where younger folks and those young at heart want to live. Action on Vision Zero and making our streets safer for everyone and getting to zero deaths in our streets. The city also has a commitment to Active Living in alignment with the mayor's Active Living Advisory Committee. And as we just discussed in the last budget item, climate action, more bike infrastructure and safe ways to bike helps get more people on bikes and helps lower emissions. So I urge the mayor and council members to support this resolution and help Omaha achieve many of these stated goals, creating bike infrastructure, stopping the brain drain, getting to Vision Zero, supporting Active Living, and supporting our climate action goals. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll now move to opponents. Any opponents to number 16?
Donnie Johnson, 4928 North 52nd Street, Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. Over the years, we've had some things in Omaha, and I'm trying to look at this bike thing they're talking about. So what we've noticed about in North Omaha, in your bike trail, and members and friends of mine in Congress keep me focused on certain issues. Like when Andrew Young came here and I asked him about some program, First Ambassador to the United Nations.
So, Donnie, we've had a long day. I need to encourage you to stay focused on a bike lane.
Okay, good. I'm glad you said that, because you don't give room for anything. Okay, well, let's go back this way. In North Omaha, we're, the time, excuse me, let me go back for a second since you interrupted me, where I was trying to make a point. My point is this. I've been studying with Mr. Elon Musk many, many months and years, for the last couple of years, and I've been noticing, he is saying that he's going to put all these electrical cars out, and we don't have not one electrical outlet in North Omaha. I've seen a few as I walk around town.
All right. That's not a bike lane. We need to.
Yeah, but why are they spending money on this project and not looking at the projects in North Omaha? We need electrical outlets. Like, the Unicam was screwed up the BMW plant, they screwed up the Saturn plant, we could have had that. Now you guys got to look at this. Do you want to focus on something that's moving forward? As in 1972, Silicon Valley, I was a part of that. Albert Einstein programs, I was a part of that. But now you're telling us, forget any electrical outlets, and fossil fuel is on the way out the door, and we don't have no electrical outlets. This disagreement with North Omaha and where we're going is a very bad situation, if you ask me.
All right. Thank you.
In the meantime, what are they going to do in the cold weather with our bikes?
Any other opponents that want to speak today? CNN Public Hearings closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was having a little sidebar with council member Rowe. I want to say a couple of things first and then maybe propose some friendly amendments if you'll hear me out. And I think part of this was raised by Mr. Naughtle, and it's not the streetcar authorities' purview or responsibility in this matter. So, one of the items that I would propose as a friendly amendment in the resolution, I believe it's, I'll call it the second-to-last paragraph that starts that the city council of the city of Omaha urges the Omaha Streetcar Authority to fully evaluate co-locating a permanent protected bike lane on Harney Street or another location in the redevelopment plan area, providing comparable service as the existing pilot project. I would, my friendly amendment in part would be to strike all of that that I just read, because it is not the Omaha Streetcars Authority to evaluate that. But I think you've heard from the spokesperson from the Streetcar Authority that they're willing to be a participant in those conversations. So that would be one. The other is, in the last paragraph, and I don't know if, since we're kind of maybe doing this on the fly, but the gist of what I would like to get across is that we continue, we want to make sure that we don't have a gap in service here and that what's in the current agreement, the pilot program goes to September, it's actually 30th, it says it's 31st, but we all know there's only 30 days in September. But that we want to make sure that there is no lapse in having that or requiring BikeWalk to start removing bollards if we don't. or requiring BikeWalk to start removing bollards if we don't have some sort of mechanism in place to continue the pilot program. I would suggest that we include language in here that would, that would encourage the city of Omaha, or the resolution would be to have the city of Omaha and BikeWalk Nebraska, Metro Smart Cities and BikeWalk Nebraska, continue the pilot program while the decision is being made on the streetcar, whether or not we go forward with the streetcar. And then, if and when we do, where that, that would, that route would go. Because I think we can continue to gather vital and important information on the use of and how it might look in the future. I think that's, we should take advantage of that, that, that time, that timeframe while we're making the decision on, on whether or not we even have a streetcar. So, what I want to make sure is that, that we don't have that lapse because I think it's an important program that we continue to look at and evaluate. And I just want to make sure we, we don't lose or have that, that gap in, in service or that gap in the ability to, to use that. So... Well, that's not part of the resolution, though, but...
Yeah, that's right.
Hold on a second. Oh, consider option. So, maybe as it, as it picks up in the last paragraph...
Second line in the center.
I know, I know, but I, I think, again, what I'm trying to get at is that we, we need to have an agreement in place so that once September 30th comes, that BikeWalk Nebraska and, and the city of Omaha and Metro Smart Cities can extend this for a period of up to 12 months and not even have to have council approval of that. If I, correct? I'll ask the city attorney, Mr. Kuzi, to weigh in on that.
Matt Kuzi, Law Department, the existing agreement will expire on September 30th, 2022. There are the contract, the agreement has a mechanism in place to extend that agreement. And if it did not go beyond a year and did not involve any money, it would not have to go before the council.
Okay, so that's, that's what I'm trying to get at, is that we have the ability to extend the agreement for a period, I'll just say up to 12 months. I know it's not going to be that long, but up to 12 months, and we can continue to gather that useful information so that we can, when we're moving forward with a permanent solution, which I hope we get to at, at that point, is that we'll have that additional information during that period of time while we're making the decision on, on the streetcar authority. So, I'll try to summarize. Strike the, the, the second-to-last paragraph in its entirety, that which started the city council, the city of Omaha, and ends with existing pilot project. And then, be it further resolved, the, the city council urges Public Works to engage with Metro Smart Cities and BikeWalk Nebraska to continue the pilot, the pilot project until a decision is made on the streetcar and whether or not the city proceeds with a streetcar, and then what the route of the streetcar would be.
I'll second that.
It's a friendly amendment, though, so...
It's not the floor motion, the floor amendment you just made? So, I'll, do you want, I'll, I'll talk about it as a cosponsor and perhaps Mr. Rowe's reaction. Do I'd like to hear what he, what he thinks as well. I, I think we're all saying the same thing here. There's, I'm not sure that we need to get so much in the weeds here. I think that will absolutely have to happen with the current agreement for it to continue. And I can ask Julie her opinion about this, too, if she'd like. And I hope that does continue. If she acknowledges and the city acknowledges that the pilot project continue and, and that can occur through the mechanism that Mr. Kuzi just discussed in the current contract. I don't have a problem changing, you know, the streetcar authority to the Urban, Urban Corps group or whatever you may want to do there, but I think we're saying the same thing by passing this. We're just saying, we think we should do exactly what Mr. Harding just described, and hopefully that next step is that Ms. Harris does engage the city and request that formally in the current agreement. Do you have a reaction to that, Ms. Harris?
I do. I think that's our goal, is to find this interim solution. As I mentioned before, this is a privately funded project, and we don't have infinite resources to keep maintaining the lane and doing the snow removal and all of those things. So, what we'd like to see happen is to work with the city to find ways to, you know, make it a little bit more maintenance-friendly in the meantime, if possible, just so that we can use our resources most wisely.
So, I, I think my light's still on. So, let me, let me...
I thought you were asking for my reaction.
No, no, that's okay. No, I'm, I'm glad you asked Julie up, and, and let me, let me do this because sometimes we don't want to make sausage, you know. We, we have some time, I believe, before, we have, today's the 13th. We have two meetings before the 30th. I would suggest, rather than try to do something on the fly and not do it right, that we lay this over until next week. And during that time, we can come up with the proper language, get the proper parties in the, in the resolution that we need to refer to, and, and come up with, with a cleaner resolution to consider. So, my friendly, my, my friendly amendments that I made and were seconded, I'd probably ask you to...
I'll withdraw my no.
And I'll, I'll withdraw my, my friendly amendment and then introduce, I guess, a new friendly amendment, saying to lay it over for a week.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second on the floor. I did want to get to Mr. Rowe because it's his, his amendment here, but Mr. Palermo has his light on, so, okay. He just switched Mr. Rowe, the four years.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that, that layover. I think we want to get it right. I just, my whole goal in having this resolution put together was that we didn't lose sight of the fact that it's an important mode of transportation and that we want to see something happen in the Urban Corps. And that was my whole goal, and I didn't want to waste $3.5 million putting, you know, passing an ordinance that said we're going to spend $3.5 million and then tear it out in three years. That is the last thing I want to see happen. But I do want to put it on record that it is an important mode of transportation. If we lay it over for a week to, to iron out these details, I'm fine with that. That's not a problem.
And as a proponent, let me ask you this, since we're having a conversation on the floor yet. I, I don't object to, I think where you're going with this, and I don't think BikeWalk Nebraska does either. It'd be great to have unanimous vote on an expression of support on a, on a project I think is very important to, to our future. I, I do think it's important, though, that we are expressing some support for a permanent situation here. Where that gets determined is yet to be determined, but that's an important part of what this says that I think you haven't said in your floor amendment. So, I guess my question back to you would be, if we lay it over, lay it over for one week to satisfy some of the language requirements you're proposing, that I think could be acceptable, are you also acceptable to the permanent language? Because I think that's important, and I don't know that we would lay it over if you're not going to support it at that point, anyway.
Is that, that's a question to me.
I guess so, since it was your...
Well, yeah, no, I, I, I would agree with Don, I think, to have, to have that, you know, wherever it might be, is something that, that we need to stay focused on. But I'm not willing to commit to where that permanency is without knowing whether or not we're moving forward with the streetcar one, and number two, what the route is.
Yeah, route to be determined, but permanent is an important word, I guess, is my point.
Okay.
Are, are we thinking we're expressing that a week from now?
I think so.
Did you have your light on, Mr. Palermo?
I did.
You ready?
Yeah, it's still on.
Okay.
As the city council turns here, this is, this is why we don't discuss agenda items here in this setting because we will prolong the meeting till midnight.
And can I make a note about that? Mr. Rowe has to leave in five minutes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm only going to talk four and a half.
Okay, perfect.
So, but, but it is dangerous when we talk about language changes on agenda items on the fly. But I would support the layover. I would support the language change. But ultimately, if we're talking about how important it is, where's the funding? Why is there no funding mechanism put into this bike lane that everybody agrees is so important? We don't have to spend the money, but we could start the funding process to actually do something instead of every year talking about a pilot project and talking about where it's going to be next. So, as we find ourselves dangerously down this lane of making changes on the fly, where's the funding? That's my question.
Thank you. Mr. Begley.
Thanks. In order to get, expedite this for Don, I just wanted to confirm what council member Harding said, and you didn't, Mr. President. It's, you want this to be permanent. It's just a matter of finding a location, whether it's Harney Street or Leavenworth or Coming. Is that what I am understanding from this? If we lay it over, that's what we're looking for? Either one of you guys can answer that, just so I'm clear. That you want it to be a permanent protected bike lane? The question becomes, with the other moving parts we want to iron out, is it going to be permanent? Correct?
That, that would be my intention, yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right.
And that's, that's my intention as well. I, I just want to make sure we do it right and, and not waste money.
Okay, we also do not currently have a full council at the moment, so I want to wait one more minute until they do. But I think we're coming to some agreement. Mr. Rowe, any further comments you want to have on this?
I think there's a motion on the floor to table for one week, and I'm agreeable to that.
Okay. All right. There's no further lights. There was a motion in a second to labor for one week. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Palermo. Yes. Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one. Item, item 17, a resolution to raise revenue estimates and revise the expenditures of the 2023 recommended budget as listed on the agenda due to the areas annexed into the city effective July 13th, 2022.
The vote on number 17 is today. No further lights. Is there a motion? I'll second. Roll call.
Johnson, Johnson.
Number 17.
Number 17.
Motion to approve. Yep.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, six to zero. Item 18, a resolution to approve an increase of an additional 1% to the budgeted restricted funds for the fiscal year 2023.
The vote on number 18 is today. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 19, a resolution to approve the 2023 budget of the city of Omaha as submitted by the mayor and finance director with revisions adopted at this city council meeting.
The vote on number 19 is today, which is the budget as amended. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 20, a resolution to approve the 2023-2028 capital improvement program. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The vote on number 20 is today. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 21, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Kennedy Square East, located northeast of 30th Street and Spencer Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 21 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Joni Poor with the Omaha Housing Authority, 1823 Harney Street. Just here in support of this and happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Other proponents on number 21?
Donnie Johnson, the Johnson E. Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I think, Mr. President, why you're getting confused about my conversation is because when Mr. Steve Rosenblatt was on the city council many years ago, he let us elaborate. But in the meantime, I didn't realize you were so young, so you wouldn't understand some of these programs. And Elon Musk...
Thank you.
We're trying our best to get electrical outlets in North Omaha because I believe Mr. Elon Musk is going to make this happen. So, sometimes if I have to go back, I think when you was in high school and Mr. Rosenblatt and us was trying to get things done, and they sent me off to New York to do some more research, I think that's where you get confused. We're not trying to deviate from anything. We're just going to make sure that North Omaha get a piece of the pie.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents to number 21? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for the approval.
I'll second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 22, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Signal Hill, Replat 2, located southwest of 120th and L Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 22 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
Luke Shor, 2522 South 33rd Street. This is currently the site of the Famous Daves, I believe, right there. If that is correct. There we go. That is the YouTube screenshot of it. We've got all of this parking lot, car-oriented development again, and is it closed? Am I, is that correct? It's not currently open for business? Perfect, yeah. So, you are making zero money off of this development right now. There, I cannot remember the city that this is in, but two identical lots in the same city. One is a 100-year-old development where they've got places, I mean, of business that are side by side. It's the old-school development pattern where you can have a barber shop next to, an antiques dealer next to blah, 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 blah. If one business goes out of business, you have businesses beside it that are still bringing in revenue for a city. Over here, you have a Taco John's with a whole bunch of pavement, car-oriented travel again, pedestrian unfriendly, and here's the difference in tax revenue on identical square-foot lots. So, you're about to approve... Oh, no, did I get the right one? More of the same. There we go. So, alls what I see here again is a Sonic with pavement around it, and you've got two other businesses which will help. If one goes out, you'll have two other ones bringing in revenue, but we have to break this cycle of car-oriented zoning everywhere, whether it's suburbs or fast food and things like this. They, they're not beneficial overall to the city's budget, and that's all I have to say on that for now. So, thank you.
Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Items 23 through 26 can be considered together for Arcadia Ridge, located northwest of Kansas and Laurel Avenues. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 23 and 24, ordinance history on this property from AG District to DR District and R4 District. Item 25, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 26, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
The public hearing and vote on items 23 through 26 are today. Proponents, please.
Kyle Hazy with ENA Consulting Group, 10909 Millbilly Road, representing the applicant, making myself available for any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Luke Shor, 2522 South 33rd Street. Again, this is suburban sprawl, and I genuinely don't care at this point. He said, "Come on." This is a passion project of mine. This is more suburban sprawl out into farmlands, and I'm a farm boy, so nimbyism goes both ways, right? Not in my backyard. Quit suburban sprawl. We have to rethink. And just voting yes on all these things time after time, we have to, we have to start thinking differently. We know that these things do not work, and we have years of tax revenue and things to show for it. But there you go. I will come on and I will, that's my piece for the day. Thank you for your time all day long, so...
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Any other opponents? Seeing none. Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized. Okay. No further lights? Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item twenty-seven, an ordinance to rezone property located at 1319 South 21st Street from GI District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item twenty-eight, an ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 20th and N Streets from R7 District and CC District to R7 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Sanier with AO, 4610 Dodge Street. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see Mr. Gaboral out in the audience, but he's not going to come up because he knows that it's Taco Tuesday and Dollar Margaritas at the club and you came empty-handed. But thanks for sticking around. I appreciate the work you're doing down here. So, motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item twenty-nine, an ordinance to rezone property located at 5904 N Street and 5912 N Street from DR District to R4 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item thirty, an ordinance to rezone property located at 2234 South 13th Street from GI District and B.D. District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Sean Reagan from Admiral Theater, 2234 South 13th Street, here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll make a motion to support this. And Sean, that really is fascinating. I got to go through that a couple months ago. It must have been in late June. But I'm looking forward to getting in there and seeing the finished product because the transformation of that has been spectacular. And that's right on Vinny and I's border. It's in my district. I know he wants it. But we appreciate the work you've done down there. It's going to be a great, great addition to that neighborhood as it gets rejuvenated going forward. So, thanks.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the kind words. Look forward to seeing you guys.
Motion that I'll second. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Melton Epstein's. Item thirty-one, an ordinance to rezone property located at 718 Pierce Street from HI District to R7 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item thirty-two, an ordinance to rezone property located at 5256 and 5252 South 16th Street from R4 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty-two is today. Proponents, please.
Jeff Deal, Deal Anderson Architects, 1717 Vinton Street, here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item thirty-three, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI overlay district to incorporate into that district. The property located at 2506 and 2510 North 24th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number thirty-three is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few questions. I asked to have a briefing on this item, and that briefing was denied. So we're going to answer the questions now that I have, since we had no time before this meeting. This address, 2506 and 2510 North 24th Street, is in the area of Long School where I reside as president. Also, this is also in District Two whereby no one felt the need to have a conversation about what's going on here. So at this time, I'd like to, the Planning Department or someone, to explain to me why we're rezoning this area.
Dave Fanzel, City Planning. As you know, this property is basically the Love's Jazz building that we've been discussing for some time. We are planning to dispose of that to Noma, North Omaha Music and Arts, in a few weeks here. And before we transfer the property, we wanted to make sure it had the ACI overlay on it. So it brings the highest design quality standards if and when that property is redeveloped.
And what are the highest design qualities?
Basically, building materials, signage, landscaping, stuff like that.
Are there any things like, since this area is on 24th Street and it is designated as an entertainment district, and we are now contemplating putting residential houses nearby, or we're contemplating putting senior citizen facilities nearby. So I asked if are we going to put anything in place to address the loud music and traffic and things like that that would oftentimes interfere with senior citizens' quality of life? Has that been taken into consideration?
The zoning code takes into consideration noise. There's an entire section of the zoning code that talks about noise levels that are permissible from any zoning district. We operate on a complaint basis, so most of that area is zoned NBD, Neighborhood Business District. So if there were a complaint, we would take a look at the complaints and we would follow the zoning ordinance as it's been approved.
Well, we've had numerous complaints on 24th Street as it relates to the Business Improvement District that when a situation such as on 25th and Ames, a shooting takes place, and we want to place that association on the social club, which is at 25th and Ames. So we are having, Nona is going to be here at 2506. Great opportunity for economic development, but how will we protect their fallout in the community as it relates to being victims of the news media and other entities reporting out that this would be associated with the things that are happening at Nona simply because they're open maybe past nine o'clock? Because right now, on 24th Street, if you're open past nine o'clock, the perception media-wise as well as community-wise, you are a nuisance. So help me understand how all that fits into this plan that we want to do on 24th Street as we venture out with development and venture out with making economic growth to that area.
Well, those, everything you mentioned have nothing to do with the zoning request that's in front of you. And if there's nuisances and/or whatever is happening, it doesn't fall under the purview of my department and most likely the Omaha Police Department.
So if we don't deal with that now, then you are creating something in the end that's going to cause a problem to this community.
I'm not creating that problem, no.
The city planning decision to put Nona here and knowing full well that the community will be stifled from this being a benefit to the community because in order for it to be valuable, Nona, to be valuable, their doors would need to be open past nine o'clock. And if an incident takes place, such as crime, then they will inadvertently catch the heat. And then we would be asking them to close their doors at nine. This is a pattern that we have established in North Omaha.
Well, I don't control how late businesses are open, and I don't make the decision to dispose of this piece of property in a few weeks, not today, to Nona. That'll be your and your colleagues' decisions to make.
Okay.
Not mine.
I'm glad you're spelling out what your decisions could be. However, do you not have any compassion regarding the community, especially when there are community block grants that are being used and being funded for things like this? And yet, the community is going to have to have a building that is going to have to close its doors at nine o'clock because of the sentiments that crime is going to happen. When we have Christmas in the village, we have to have barricades up and down the street. We have to do all these degrading things in the community. And yet, you're recommending that we rezone this area so that it can enjoy the benefits of changing that area, which would then generate more funding, more opportunities for development, more opportunities for us to have economic growth. But yet, we would be saddled with a building that can't function after nine o'clock because we're not addressing the community's concerns, needs, and things like that. So we keep on putting these bandage, such as zoning, on these projects, and we're not addressing how things are being reported in this community as it relates to crime, as it relates to funding. We're not addressing those. But we're going to continue to rezone and rezone as though we want to develop a prosperous environment. But yet, we're not going to deal with the community fallout.
Is there a question there?
Yeah, there's a question there. You're proposing that we rezone this and not deal with the community aspect of this and continue to use governmental dollars to uplift this community, and we're still not addressing the needs of the community.
I guess I'm not connecting the dots between an overlay zoning that will only improve the look of the property and the other issues you talk about in your district.
Improving the look and not being able to function in a way that would generate economic growth is putting a bandage over a problem.
Again, I don't control when businesses are open or when businesses close.
But we-
We think, if I may, we think we're doing a lot of good for the 24th and Lake Street area. We think there's a lot of opportunity. We think there's a lot of energy. And this is just part of that process. Again, this isn't disposing of the property. This is putting a simple zoning overlay on these two pieces of property. That's what's on the agenda today.
And I find it difficult to say that good is being done when we're not addressing community needs, when we're not engaging the community of what we're doing. For example, Love Jazz was there functioning and during COVID 2020. March is when doors were closed. We were, the City of Omaha, closed the whole entire City of Omaha, March 2020, for purposes of COVID. Shortly after, Love Jazz was closed by the City of Omaha, and the citizens and the neighbors in that area were not notified that those doors were being closed. And at that time, the Love Jazz was being funded by the city. The city owned it. The city made allegations about how it was operating, but yet, they did nothing to communicate to the community that they were closing the doors. In fact, the Love Jazz doors were closed without the owners even knowing that their doors were being closed until they came and had a padlock on their door. But yet again, community development block grant funds are being used for the Love Jazz at the time, for that building at the time. And yet, no one in that area, neighborhood associations and others, were not notified about any of the closing of that business. And now we are to believe that we have a savior coming with Nona to help out. And we're going to sell this building to this organization. But yet, we had an organization that was operating there for years with straps of funding. But we're willing to do so today with no track record to a new organization and still no community output. No information has been given to the community. I'm talking about engagement. Yeah, you can say community organizations have had conversations, but you cannot say that neighborhoods have had a conversation regarding the changes that's happening at this location. That has not happened.
We had a very robust conversation when the-
No, not with the neighborhood associations. You have not-
When the plan went to Planning Board and we notified the appropriate people.
You have not notified the neighborhood associations. And these are federal funds that are being used, and there is no engagement in the community. I'm not going to say no, but little to none regarding the residents in this area, regarding all the moving parts that are happening at this location. And now we're making a new organization come in here, and still little to none regarding residents who live in this area. We have had very little engagement about what's happening at this property. 2020, COVID, everybody was on lockdown. You closed the doors. Now we have another organization coming in, and you're still not having engagement with residents in the area. Yes, you're having conversations with community organization, who by the way, community organization have no accountability as to when they go and talk to people in the area, the impacted area. There is no documentation from these community organizations regarding what conversations they have with residents in the area. And we're doing good by this community.
I can say when we put the 24th and Lake Street Redevelop Plan together, we did more outreach and communication with the residents and the neighborhood associations and the business owners in that area, more than we have any other plan in my 33 years as City of Omaha.
And I agree with you. You did more- And I agree with you. You did more then, but that more then equated to 200 people, and District Two consists of more than 200 people.
I can't control how many people engage with us.
No, you can't. However, more needs to be done to engage people if we are going to deal with poverty in this particular area. More engagement needs to be done. So now we have another opportunity here. You're wanting to rezone this area. Nothing wrong with that, but what is the outcome? What will that look like? Will it be more of what happened with the Love Jazz? You're not engaging the public there. You're not engaging the neighborhoods to participate in these buildings?
Well, this is, again, this is a simple rezoning, so I guess I'll answer any questions you have about the rezoning.
Much like the request to have a briefing, this is how you engage the resident-
No, that's not true. That's not true.
This is how you engage the resident, and this is how you engage the person that was appointed-
Sure.
-to be the representative for this area.
Let me say two things. This information was sent to your office on June 30. It was on the July Planning Board meeting. It's over two months ago. I don't, I can't control what happens to the information once my department sends it to the City Council, but you've had it for two months.
And if you mean having it for two months with this ordinance, which is-
No, it's not.
Eight by 11 pieces of paper with no other details, when other overlays come throughout the City of Omaha, there are other details given to an overlay. Why is this the only information that I have to determine what's going to go on with this project should this overlay be approved?
Well, you have the Planning Board Recommendation Report, and you have the Site Plan.
And that doesn't, that does not give me enough information to articulate to the community what's going on here, which I've said over and over again to the City Planning Department, using federal dollars again and again with the intent to help this community, but yet you exclude not only the neighborhood, but the representative.
It's not true.
That is true.
Oh, it's not.
Well, what do you call when you refuse to do a briefing and you allow briefings for the other six members that are City Council? What do you call that?
I call it fair and equal treatment because all seven of you received the same information and the same opportunity to engage my department if you have any questions. You are correct. I or my staff do not have time to have individual briefings with the seven of you, which is why we have a committee, which is why we send every piece of information from the Planning Board to your office. This agenda comes out three, four, or five days ago. I didn't get any questions from you about it. So we treat all seven of you equal. So just so we're sure, everybody's being treated equal. Everybody gets the same information at the same time.
If we were all being treated equal, then we wouldn't have an environment where North Omaha looks the worst in all of Omaha. So we're not being treated all equal. And as it relates to me getting notified five days ago, my request to have a briefing with you was two weeks ago.
You were notified from my department on June 30.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It still doesn't speak to the fact that this overlay and changing the environment at 24th and Lake without addressing the community needs and always coming to put a bandage on a problem is not going to overall fix what's happening in North Omaha. And your refusal to have a briefing to address it and hide behind you're doing things fairly is not an excuse.
It's not an excuse. It's the facts.
No, it's not a fact.
Sure. You all get the same information.
If we all got the same information, I'm going to say this again, then North Omaha wouldn't be looking the way it looks, and then when I go out to 160th and Q, the conditions are different. So no, we're not all being treated the same.
You're being treated the same from my-
No, we're not.
From my department, yes, you are.
No, we're not.
Yes, you are.
If we were, why is there a difference?
I can't, I can't, I can't answer that.
No, you can't answer that. You can hide behind the answer. So the next time when I ask for a briefing, you might want to consider giving me the briefing so that I can ask the questions that I need so that I can provide those answers to the residents in this area whereby federal funds are being allocated to fix an old problem, which is poverty, which is still has not been addressed for decades. Potholes, sidewalks, the conditions look horrible when we look at other parts of the City of Omaha and Nebraska in relationship to the District Two. I'm fine. I'm done. What I just said needed to be said because we hide behind real facts. Real facts is District Two is behind the curve ball regarding economic development, regarding how the street looks, how the holes looks in the streets, the whole nine yards. City services is to provide good public service throughout the City of Omaha, not six districts and leave one in a deplorable situation.
There are no further lights. I don't see one on the machine here. Maybe the machine ran out of batteries or something. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the ordinance that we're considering, I think, addresses some of the issues that Councilmember Johnson raises and Mr. Fenslow answered, in that building materials, you know, and, you know, the level of finished landscaping, et cetera, are held to, if you will, to a higher standard. Would that be kind of a way to put it, Mr. Fenslow?
That is correct.
Okay. And I attended both the Pre-Planning Board and the Planning Board meeting when this particular item was on the Planning Board's agenda, and I think there were a number of people who came out, and I would, I know Greg Rosenbaum, who's the chairman of the Planning Board, will probably be mad at me for saying this, but I think after the presentation that Mr. Murray gave, had Mr. Rosenberg in tears. I mean, he was that moved by the level of commitment and what he was trying to bring to 24th and Lake and make it that much better. I mean, I think this is a tremendous opportunity for that area, and I'll make a motion to approve as well.
Ms. Johnson, your light's not on at the moment. I think we do have Ms. Melton next in the queue. There was a motion in a second, right? And Ms. Melton, your light's on?
Yes. I just want to, I want to say, Mr. Fenslow, I mean, I don't disagree that there are streets that need to be taken care of. I think maybe you're getting blamed for a lot of things that aren't necessarily under your purview or control.
I didn't take it as blame because I knew those were not under my control.
Okay. And what I want to let you know is I actually appreciate the, I mean, the nine pages that I get from the Planning Board that explain everything. I appreciate that. But the other thing is, what's really easy to do, and what I did even just at the last Planning Board meeting, was you can actually just go onto the City of Omaha Planning Board, and you can watch the Planning Board meetings. You can log in and watch them from your desk. And so I can't say that I may not be doing some accounting or other work while I'm watching and listening, but I multitask. But I do think it's really important because a lot of times at the Planning Board level, we'll get even more information, or at least then I know what I'm to be ready for. And I don't look for things just in my district. I'm considering things all over the entire city. So I do think that that is very handy and helpful, and I appreciate that ability to be able to do that. And also, I look at the drawings on this, and it does appear, I mean, this building is going to beautify that corner. I mean, this building, even not just the architecture, but from what it looks like, the landscaping on the outside and the pavement. And I think, I like that this is, that you're requiring this, and I believe that the Business District requires it as well because it's part of the Neighborhood Business District. Is that right?
It is, yes.
Okay. So I think it, I think it's great. I would love to see something like that in my district. I don't have anything like that in my district. I think it's fabulous. Great place to go, and really, I'd love to have my building, my business across the street from it if we were looking at something like that. I just think it's great, and I appreciate the fact that the city is requiring a higher standard in all areas of the city, but especially in ACI and these business districts where they're working really hard and they're contributing their own money. The businesses are contributing their own money to make sure that the streetscape looks good and the businesses around it look good. And I think that that's the key, too, in some of these business districts. Again, I don't have them in mine, but I appreciate them in everybody else's district. So thank you, Mr. Fenslow.
You bet. Thank you. So, and again, we want to make sure that the zoning overlay is in place before we no longer are the owners. So that's the reason why this cases before you.
Right, and I think that's important, too. I wouldn't want you to do that without making sure that this building in this area was held to a higher standard, so that we're attempting to make sure that North Omaha isn't treated less than anybody else. We want to make sure that there's higher standards, and so I appreciate you making sure that happens before it's sold.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Two things. The overall project regarding what Dana Murphy is proposing is not the issue here. The issue, at least not the issue that I'm addressing as well as District Two constituents. We are concerned about how the City Planning Department goes about making decisions for our community without including us. I brought about one example, which was in 2020, March, we, as a city, were closed due to COVID. And during that time, the doors of Love Jazz was closed. There were no notification in the area that this was being, this decision to close the doors of the Love Jazz that was made by the City Planning Department was being closed. And yet, this is an area where we're, as a city, as well as the federal government, is pouring in a lot of federal dollars to uplift this community, to make a better Omaha in underserved communities. And yet, we, as the leaders of the city, felt no obligation to communicate that to the residents in this area. And yes, I understand fully that this is an overlay, but I would be remiss if I did not mention that these doors at the Love Jazz at this location were closed by the City Planning Department during a time of COVID, and residents were not informed. And yes, there was some little and maybe even better outreach to the community, as Mr. Fenslow has pointed out, but that amounted to 200 people responding to what was being, what was being provided by the City Planning Department. And I'm saying that in order for an underserved community to receive the maximum amount of a huge difference and impact on their day-to-day lives, we have to do a better job at how we do things. Reaching out to a community organization and not challenging them to go door-to-door or to go to different outlets to communicate the needs and get the information about what those needs are is not changing the needle as it relates to this area of town where we have poverty. One would even argue if this has a direct relationship with the crime rate that we have in North Omaha. One would even argue, is this why we have the highest number of juvenile cases in Omaha? One would argue a lot of social reasons as to why things are happening. Is it because they're not engaged? Is it because they don't feel they have a voice? Is it because if I don't have a voice about what's going to happen to me tomorrow or what's happening in my own backyard, somebody else is going to come and make a decision for me? Are you not inviting me to feel hopeless? The idea of federal funds coming into this area is to bring about change, to bring about a difference. And yes, what Dana Murphy is proposing in this building is different. It could bring about a change, but the impact of what happened in 2020 during COVID, when the Love Jazz building was closed, has not been addressed.
We can address it right now if you want.
Yeah, please do.
Do you know why they were-
The community wasn't addressed. Maybe the community organizations were told.
So you talk about federal funds in the Love's, former Love's Jazz building. They had a contract and an agreement with the city to operate in a certain way, and after some investigation, a lot of investigation, I should say, we found them to be in breach of their contract. So not to jeopardize those federal funds that the city has expended on that building, we chose to terminate their lease.
And what would you say that I did my investigation of those allegations that were alleged against the Love Jazz and found them to be untrue?
I guess they'd be different than mine.
And you know, and I know that just because an allegation is large doesn't necessarily mean it's true. So why would you-
We found them to be true.
Well, share with me and the community what, how did you find out that they were true?
We, we knew that certain things were going on in that building that were not part of their contract. They were in breach of their contract.
What were those certain things?
Concerts, alcohol being served. There was very strict guidelines and agreements with their lease, and they were outside of their lease.
Was this, was this a one-time event that they were alleged?
No, it was not. No, it was not.
Again, did you reach out to the neighbors and ask them or have any conversation with them of these alleged charges?
The neighbors weren't part of the agreement of the city.
They were, they were living right next door to the Love Jazz. Don't you think they would have had some input about whether or not these alleged charges were true or not?
I don't know. Maybe they would have.
You don't think that would have been, I mean, after all, these are federal funds to help these neighbors. Why wouldn't you ask them?
Because it was a contract between us and the Love Jazz Society.
Right. So we live in a glass house. We hear rumors, and the neighbors that's- living there every day, you didn't think enough of them to ask them if any of these rumors were true? And yet, you, City Planning, decided to close the door of, of, of the Love Jazz that was so fundamental in, 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 in that community. It was named after Preston Love. It had a huge historic value to it. And you didn't, you didn't think enough of any of those individuals that were living nearby to have a conversation with them?
I'll, I'll step back and say there weren't rumors. We have, we have copies of advertisements of things that were being promoted and happening at the building. So they, you call them rumors, I call them facts.
If those facts were facts, then why weren't the neighborhoods alerted of the facts?
I've answered that question.
What's your answer?
There was a contract between the City of Omaha and Loves Jazz.
So the neighbors had, the neighbors would have needed to go to, and, and file a document to ask to have that information provided to them?
I guess I'd look at my colleague, Matt Kuzzi, to answer that question. I don't know what they'd have to file to find out. If they wanted to know what was going on, yeah, they could have asked us.
Huh. So again, my concern has nothing to do with the proposed zoning. It has to do with how City Planning engages in the community using federal funds. And now we have another zoning opportunity here.
We do a heck of a job in engaging the community.
With 200 remarks.
Councilwoman Johnson, with all due respect, I could, I could, I could spend months engaging certain members of this community. I cannot control how many people respond. And if we waited for every constituent that you have in and around that area to respond, we wouldn't even have a plan. That's unrealistic to think that we can continue to drag out processes until what magic numbers hit. We busted our behinds on the engagement for 24th and Lake. You're offending me. You're offending my hard-working staff, saying we didn't. I cannot control the fact that only 200 of your constituents, the people you talk to about these processes, responded to our, our, our appeal for public input. That is not in my control. Simple.
So, Mr. Fanslaw, Ms. Johnson, I'm going to suggest we try to move on. I don't, I don't think this conversation is becoming more productive, and we do have 89 items to get to yet today.
Well, Mr. President, Mr. Fanslaw had the opportunity to have a briefing with me. He chose not to. Mr. President, he just said to me that he, he's taking offense to me in terms of me saying that he did not do a good job, or his department didn't do a good job. I would like the record.
I do. I take offense to it.
I would like the record to reflect. That is not the issue here. The issue here is that we only had 200 responses when the community was reached. Now, if that equates to him doing a bad job or a good job, that's his perception. I'm simply stating the facts. 200 people responded to their reach. And I think it's well-deserving to note that there is only 200 responses that came as a result of this reach. And we need to do a better job at reaching this area in which federal funds are being allocated to improve the living conditions in this area. We can do a better job at the reach. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you made the point. Okay. There's no further lights on this item. There was a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson.
If, if, if anyone is listening, I'm being disrespected by my colleagues. I've asked them to respect me making the motion when it comes to District Two. My colleagues, if we look at the record, they do not make a motion for council member Palermo, when it's in his district, they do not make a motion for, a motion for...
There was a call for a vote. Is that correct?
Point of order is that...
Ms. Johnson, I did call for the vote. And to follow our rules, we can't have further speaking at that point.
Well, well, the point of order is that we continue to allow me to be disrespected here, sitting at this meeting. That's the point of order.
Roll call, please.
Any yes or no? Johnson?
No.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed five to one. Item 34, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI overlay District Two. Incorporate into that district the property located at 1113 North 72nd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 34 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. This is my district, and I'll be supportive of this. If somebody wants to motion?
Oh, you gotta be respectful now.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
We have a problem here.
Ms. Johnson, this is a vote. We can't...
We have a problem here where we have someone that can be respectful of someone's district and making a motion for certain colleagues and not others. We have a problem. And we need to address that problem. I'm, I'm not going to continue to vote on things when I'm not being respected by, by, by this city council. I'm not going to do that. We either going to be respectful across the aisles, or we're not. And I've asked, when I'm, when, when something is in District Two, that I be given the respect that my other colleagues are given by allowing them to make that motion.
That is correct.
Roll call.
Johnson.
No.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed five to one. Item 35, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district located at 3324 North 16th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 35 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello. My name is Don Curry, the developer for this site, 33324 North 16th Street. Here for any questions.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
No, sorry.
Okay. No further lights. Is there a motion?
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson. Come back. Do you want me to come back? Take that as a pass. Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Johnson? Johnson passes twice due to a potential conflict of interest. Motion is passed.
Johnson is passing because of protesting about how this procedure is being handled and where my colleagues continue to disrespect.
Still abstention. Items 36.
I will continue to, I will continue to do a protest until this issue regarding respect of me making a motion for things impacting my district as it, as it is given by other colleagues. I will continue to protest on my motion to vote going forward.
Next item, please.
Items 36 and 37 can be considered together for property located at 7340 and 7348 Blondo Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 36, an ordinance to rezone this property from R7 District and R2 District to LC District. Item 37, an ordinance to rescind the PK overlay district for this property.
Public hearing and vote on items 36 and 37 are today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Bob Foster, 610 Loveland Drive, here on behalf of the owners to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Foster, I do have a question for you, but Mr. Palermo's light's on.
I want to thank you for being here because you accidentally came to the Board of EAK.
I've been here since 1:30.
Yes, you have. And I also wanted to make the motion because the president doesn't make motions. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'll second that and just thank Mr. Foster for being here. Also, this is actually, this is my district, and actually, it's my dentist's office, right? So this combines two, two plots of land, that then will make it a more tenable site for his business, correct?
It'll make it more tenable. There's a significant drainage issue in the back because the apartments in the back, all their drainage comes off onto this property. So this will improve the drainage for both this property and the neighbor, and then also enhance the parking for handicap parking to be right next to the door as opposed to back behind the building.
Great. Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
I'm protesting.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 38, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow construction, sales, and service in the CC District located at 19251 Grant Avenue, Suite 100. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 38 is today. Proponents, please.
Jeff McGregor, 11750 Stonegate Circle, here on behalf of the owner, MII Blondo LLC, here for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Yeah, this is first time I'm coming. You know, I, I'm requesting all your help in this matter. I'm not against Jeff, but I had a couple of concerns. I will explain you.
Okay. Passing your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. My name is Aratish, 3565 South 186th Street. I am the adjacent lot owner. So I can't, yeah.
More into the microphone.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. I will. Yeah. So this is the lot. I own it. So basically, my idea is to, we'll take a coffee shop. And I have a plan. I was working harder basically last 10 months to make my vision, vision coming soon. But, you know, I, I'm not against the idea of having a special zone or idea of having a particular business. I, I don't have any issue on that. But my request would be the city, City Planning Department, because I was, you know, I started doing this one, and I was planning on this one. But after sometime when I, passing by, I looked at the lot, I found that there are a lot of construction going on. And they did not, they did not ask, basically, city did not ask my permission if that is okay to do the construction in that site. And in fact, there was an idea by the applicant to share a, share a line, share a drive-through, not a drive-through, share a access line between two lots. But it was not my knowledge. They, they proposed that way. I did not know that. But when I went and looked at the lot, I saw that, you know, it is not possible to build a coffee shop now.
I need to hear your testimony, and I know there's another conversation going on. I respectfully ask if you guys can take it with the other person, please, so...
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah. So, you know, I did not know that there was a construction going on. But when I went there, I saw that the construction is going on. And in fact, the situation is like, you know, the applicant started grading in our property. And it is, my vision is very much difficult now to make it through. But I'm, I'm, I'm with, you know, a friendly relationship with Jeff. He will make it happen. I, I hope that he will help me on that. But my request would be, city, please do not allow, or please do not approve, having a access line through my lot until we resolve the issue.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I'm sure Planning's here to address any issues you may have today. But you do know that this comes with the Planning Board and Planning Department recommendation, correct?
But, you know, I'm pretty new to this one, but I don't know if...
That's a good thing. You're new. I'm going to tell you, that's a good thing.
Yeah. So I, I don't know if we, if city already approved the plan, or city, city's going to approve it.
Well, depending on who's left, we, we may actually get to that point today. What I will do, though, is ask the Planning Director, Mr. Fanslaw, if he would like to add anything to the comments you've heard.
So, yeah, this is a use permit. Once it's approved by City Council, I can't say that plans are being reviewed now. They could be, but we want to approve them until council's action. If plans haven't been submitted, submitted, then after council's approval, if that's what you choose to do, it'll be free to submit plans, but we review them towards a use permit.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion to approve at this point.
Sure. You know, one last thing I...
I'd take that back.
Oh, I'll do the approval.
Okay. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson is absent. Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
And Mr. President is absent. Motion approved. It's four to zero. That's 38. Item 39, classes, oops, sorry, I'm looking at something. To consider a class IK liquor license for Texas State Brazil located at 1110 Capitol Avenue.
Jen, item 39 is at this time. Proponents, please.
Vice President Palermo, Members of the Council Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Hearing today on behalf of the applicant, happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any opponents? Seeing none?
Motion and a second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 39 is approved. Six to zero. Item 40, to consider a classy liquor license for LVA Hon Restaurant located at 5132 L Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 40 is today. We have the applicant by Zoom. Mr. Polk, we'll get you off mute here in a second. Okay.
Michael Polk, 2712 South 87th Avenue, here on behalf of the applicant, LV Hon, to answer any questions. Ms. Perla Corralataga is also attending by Zoom.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Palermo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Polk, obviously, you represent the applicant here. Appreciate you being here. This address has had past issues and complaints from the neighborhood. I do wish the new business owner well. But if I didn't ask the questions about music, then I wouldn't be doing my job. Could you or the applicant give me a quick 30-second rundown on what the business model's going to be?
This is, they were running a food truck, and they're transitioning from a food truck to a sit-down restaurant. They don't anticipate having any of the noise complaints that Azul Sports Bar had. So a sit-down restaurant.
Okay, great. So the applicant, can I ask you the question, or do you intend to have loud after-dinnertime music at this establishment? loud after-dinnertime music at this establishment?
Perla, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Hi, no, we are not planning on to, nope.
And Perla, just for the record, can you say your name and address, please?
Yeah, it's Perla Corral Otega, five-eleven Martha Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-nine.
Thank you.
And what time are you open till at night?
Till ten.
Okay, great. If we get out of here in time, I'm gonna bring my crew down there. Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley? Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item forty-one, to consider a classy liquor license for Los Leanos Bar and Grill located at five-zero-eight-three, South One Hundred Thirty-Sixth Street.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-one is today. Proponents, please.
Yeah, my name is Jose Diaz de Leon. My address, seventy-nine-hundred Bridge and Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska, six-eight-five-o-seven. I'm going to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley? Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item forty-two, to consider a classy liquor license for M's Pub located at four-two-two, South Eleventh Street.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-two is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Kelly, two-eight-zero-four, South Eightieth Seventh Avenue, appearing on behalf of the applicant, happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item forty-three, to consider a classy liquor license for Ica San Ramon located at one-seven-three-zero-five, Davenport Street, Suite one-oh-five.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-three is today. Proponents, please. Don't think I see any opponents. I'm not gonna close the public hearing until I hear from Mr. Harding.
I say we're stealing one from you, or at least an addition, but do we have time on this? Because it looks like no one's here today. I'll move to layover for a week.
Motion for second, to layover one week. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley? Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item forty-four, to consider a classy liquor licenses for Casey's and Good Stop as listed on the agenda.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-four is today. Are we by Zoom or are we in person? In person, okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Morgan Worski. I'm here representing both the current licensee Bucks LLC and the new owner as Casey's Retail. We own and operate both of these companies.
Great.
Here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number forty-four? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley? Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item forty-five, to consider a classy liquor license for Q Street Express located at eight-four-one-zero, Q Street.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Good evening. My name is Janashad Nuzayev. I live in the one-fifty-one fifteen Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-one-six. If you have any question, I'm ready.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley? Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item forty-six, to consider a liquor license addition application for Yoshi Tomo located at six-zero-zero-nine Maple Street to add six-zero-one-one Maple Street.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-six is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, David Utterback, five-nine-one-seven, North One Hundred and Tenth Circle.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. David, just one question for you. So, this is the best sushi place in town.
Sure.
You have a second location now, Countryside Village, which is also quite good.
I'm trying to get each of you eventually.
Good. And this is an expansion in Benson?
Yep, some overflow seating and then a private, kind of the omakase dining experience, so, kind of a private little dining room as well.
Yeah, we look forward to it. I'll second. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley? Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items forty-seven through forty-nine were held on August thirtieth. Roll call.
Johnson? Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley? Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
We've had requests to remove items fifty-two, seventy-one, seventy-four, and seventy-nine from the consent agenda. So, we'll start with the other items listed in this section. The public hearings on agenda items number fifty and fifty-one, fifty-three, seventy, seventy-two, and seventy-three, seventy-five through seventy-eight, and eighty and eighty-one are today. If you wish to address the city council, address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Sure. We removed items fifty-two, seventy-one, seventy-four, and seventy-nine. Yes. I don't see anyone on these other items for now. I'm gonna close that public hearing. I'll second. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton? Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley? Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item fifty-two, a resolution to authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Anderson Ford Lincoln in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, one-hundred-and-forty dollars for the purchase of five Ford F-one-fifty half-ton regular cab trucks to be utilized by the traffic division.
The public hearing and vote on number fifty-two is today. We have a proponent, all right, let's see. I'll first call proponents on number fifty-two. I don't see any. I know we have an opponent by Zoom, so I'll recognize Mr. Welsh. Are you still there, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I'm Mark Welsh. I live at fifty-six-eleven Howard Street in Omaha. I'm the Omaha Coordinator for Nebraskans for Peace. And I'm wondering if the city council members are serious, like I think you are, about wanting to reduce the city of Omaha's CO2 emissions. You could show that you are by rejecting this effort to buy five gas-guzzling F-one-fifty Ford trucks with five-liter V-eight engines. By doing that, you would tell Mayor Stothard and all of your constituents that you want the city to buy all-electric trucks. There are options that will save the city money. We all need to do that these days with no gas and very little maintenance expense if you buy all-electric trucks. The cost of gas and maintenance, not just the cost of the vehicle, should be considered before approving this purchase. Have you been told how much gas and maintenance will cost during the useful life of these vehicles? Ford F-one-fifty trucks are available today in all-electric versions. There are other brands of all-electric trucks the city of Omaha could consider buying. Buying gas-powered vehicles locks the city into burning more fossil fuels for the length of time these trucks are used by the city. Now, I grew up with Ford trucks on a farm where we used the same trucks for well over twenty years. How many years or decades does the city plan to use these trucks if they are purchased? How much CO2 will be emitted by them if they are purchased in that lifetime? How long does the city of Omaha want to be partially responsible for changing the earth's climate? The world is continuing to get hotter. The climate is changing more in part because the city of Omaha continues to put more CO2 in the air by burning more fossil fuels. This is hurting the people of Omaha and throughout Nebraska, the ag industry with more and frequent hotter weather, longer and wider droughts, and larger floods. Today, I hope both Democrats and Republicans on the city council will show the community, you are serious about Omaha reducing instead of increasing the CO2 emissions every year. And by so doing, saving the city taxpayers' money by not buying gas for the next twenty years of these vehicles' life. You can do that by not buying gas-guzzling trucks. There are much better and cheaper options that will save the city money with no gas and very little maintenance. And if you've ever driven an electric truck or a car, you know how much fun they are to drive and how strong they are. So, this would be a win-win for everybody, I think, if you would reject this and buy all-electric vehicles from now on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion in a second. For the, for the record, I agree with your comments, and I think this is something that should be analyzed. Should we do a climate change action plan? Certainly, a city's fleet should be considered in that, in that discussion. There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson? Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley? Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, five to one. Item seventy-one, a resolution to approve the grant agreement in the amount of thirty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the rehab and lead reduction work to the property located at two-seven-zero-five Camden Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number seventy-one is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, Kelly Johnston Dorsey with the City Planning Department. The resolution before you right now approves a contract for a competitively bid project as part of our exterior repair program, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for city planning. I'm gonna speak on the project itself. The project itself is a good thing in terms of lead reduction. However, I do have a few questions regarding the process. And I would imagine that for our viewers as well as the constituents, they would like to have the answers to these questions as well. So, my first question is, how many bids were received?
Okay, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. I might be able to answer some of your questions, so Kelly and I can tag team this. We received two bids for this.
And who were the two bidders?
Give me a second, I'll pull it up. One was Built Right Home Improvements, and let me scroll down to the documents. The company that goes by NSRM. Those are the two bids that we received.
So, what, what what were the reasons for the successful bidder to be chosen?
Kelly might correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's because they were the low bid. She's not correcting me, so I guess I'm right.
And what were was this opportunity published? And where was it published?
It was published in the Daily Record and advertised to our approved contractors list, and there were seven bidders, or seven contractors at the open house.
So, was that the Daily, it was published in the Daily Record or where else?
It was advertised to our approved contractors list.
And could I please have a copy of your approved contact list?
Sure.
How do we go about promoting this service, which is the lead reduction work to other residents in need of help?
Give it a shot, Kelly.
There are brochures, flyers, advertised on our website. When I was talking to our staff earlier this morning, they had indicated they have given you some of the brochures and flyers, in fact, at the Juneteenth event at the Malcom X Center. So, just a lot of it is word of mouth. There are brochures and flyers all around the community.
Is this work already complete?
No.
Because when I pulled up the document, I'm a little bit confused in terms of what I saw in the document. It shows here in the document. It has a date in which the work was completed.
Yeah, Councilwoman Johnson, I know what you're seeing, and I don't know where you see it, but this is to award the bids, so the work.
It says here, this is on page ten, there's forty-four pages in the document, page ten, the contract. This contract consists only of this Part One, specific terms in the following, schedule of work, July fifteenth.
There must be two page tens, because I don't see it on the page ten I found. Oh, well, that's, that's the schedule of work you see in July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. That must have been the original date that they thought they were gonna be able to get the work done, but it's not done yet.
Okay. It looks like the work, that was the date of the work right up?
Okay. So, the work is not complete?
No.
Hasn't started.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I go ahead and move to approve.
I'll second. Now, for the lights, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Bagley? Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item seventy-four, a resolution to approve the membership to the League of Nebraska Municipalities and pay its dues in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars.
Public hearing on number seventy-four is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes, I'm not sure who might be here today to answer this question. This was presented by Diversity Inclusion, which was Mr. Station. So.
Thomas Warren, Mayor's Office, eighteen-nineteen Farnham.
What measurement will be put in place to ensure the outcomes of this service?
Okay, I'm not sure what you're referring to. The League of Municipalities is a service organization in Lincoln, Nebraska that supports municipalities and villages at the state legislature.
Okay. So, why are we paying eighty-seven thousand dollars to this, for this cause? Can you explain what's going on here in this resolution?
So, we maintain, we've maintained a relationship with the League of Municipalities as a metropolitan city, along with the other villages in the state of Nebraska. As a metropolitan city, along with other villages in the state of Nebraska, we've composed the league. The membership dues, it's a formula that they utilize based on evaluation, up to 1.15 billion. There's a percentage, decimal point 000042. So a percentage multiplied by your valuation determines your membership dues, and it's not to be increased more than $3,000 from any fiscal year to fiscal year.
So are all city employees members?
This has nothing to do with city employees. This is the city of Omaha as a membership organization to the League of Municipalities. This is an advocacy organization that supports and represents cities and villages at the state legislature in Lincoln. It has nothing to do with city of Omaha employees.
So how do we benefit from this?
Lobbying efforts. You know, we present a legislative package here, not only from the city council, but the mayor. They are lobbyists. They exert their influence during the legislative sessions down in Lincoln. They have relationships with state senators and the governor, as well as, you know, they advocate within the respective committees in state government.
So how would I benefit as a city council with this service?
I'm not sure you would benefit directly as a member of the city council. Obviously, you have a voice in preparing our legislative agenda. If you have items that you would want to have considered for the upcoming legislative session, as we put together a package, if there are constitutional amendments that we want to pursue, certainly you have the right to do so.
And so how long has the city of Omaha had this membership?
I can't tell you for certain. I can tell you that the League of Municipalities have been around since 1909. And so since the city of Omaha has been chartered, I imagine we've had some affiliation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Milton.
Oh, thanks. I just wanted to note that they actually do do seminars for elected officials that comes to our email. And Ms. Johnson, if you're not on that email, I can certainly contact them and make sure they add you. And then we get the monthly newsletter, so it shows everything that the different cities are doing. So they do hold that in Lincoln every year. The seminar has to deal with various...
They have training conferences. They provide technical assistance to smaller jurisdictions.
Yeah, and it is advertised in the magazine that we get in our inbox every month. And so I do think sometimes those are very helpful when you get to meet other city council members and mayors from all over the state. When you have similar issues, sometimes sharing ideas and things are really helpful. And I would encourage you to contact Lynn Rex. She is very helpful as well, especially in lobbying. I'd be more than happy, I know Jim, or people in our office have her number, but she's always been very helpful in advocating a lot of things that the cities want, or maybe don't want, because sometimes that's key, too. It's opposing legislation. And I have to say that if you don't have Lynn's support, you really might want to rethink it, because she's pretty powerful in making her arguments on behalf of cities.
Who serves as executive director for the League of Municipalities.
Yes.
Nebraska Municipalities.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. No for the lights. Was there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 79, a resolution to adopt the budget for the funds allocated from the federal government from the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds as part of the American Rescue Plan Act in the amount of $112,591,455.
Public hearing and vote on number 79 is today. Proponents, please.
Bernardi Nembash, Deputy City Attorney, 1819 Farnham Street. I prepared this resolution. This is intended to comply with what appears to be a requirement of the American Rescue Plan Act, to have a budget that's adopted by the municipal, by the body that's responsible for governance. Please keep in mind that even though there are categories of expenditures, other than that which the city is being reimbursed for, the individual expenditures, as you see by looking at the budget, will come before you. So you've already approved a number of them. There's obviously several other items on the budget that will be coming before you before those expenditures. So that's why you have it before you. It's to comply with what appears to be a requirement of ARPA.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. No lights, there's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 82, a ordinance to approve a pilot agreement with Automatus Inc. for automated curbside revenue services.
Number 82 was postponed from the August 16 agenda. The vote can be today. I don't see any lights unless there's a motion. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
No.
Palermo.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, four to two. Item 83, a normance to amend various sections of Chapter 36 of the Omaha Municipal Code to create Omaha Municipal Code 36-190.01 and 36-190.02 to create smart loading zones and hospitality zones.
The vote on this item is also today. I don't see any lights. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, four to two. Item 84, a normance to amend various sections of Chapter 43 of the Omaha Municipal Code and 34-1 addressing fees applied for use of public streets, alleys, or sidewalks, and the department responsible for issuing said permits.
The vote on this item is today. I don't see any lights. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Items 85 through 89 can be considered together. Resolutions to approve professional services agreement for residential snowplow inspections for the 2022-2023 winter season in the amount of $60,000 each.
The public hearings on items 85 through 89 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have a couple of questions. I'm going to guess Mr. Rousers is here to answer them. I know it's been a long day. I was going to try to move you up, but things are sticking it out.
It's good to be here. Austin Rouser, Public Works.
I just wanted to ask, I obviously have asked these same questions before. It's a fee for, obviously, a professional service agreement not to exceed... Do you know offhand what we spent last year for these professional service agreements? We didn't have a lot of snow.
We didn't have a lot of snow last year. Last year's total was $47,621 and change.
For each...
Total.
Oh, total, okay.
Of the five.
That's good. So looking back through the data, obviously, we can't always anticipate, because when we do have a lack of snow, it saves on equipment, saves on overtime, saves on material, saves on the service agreements. But my problem has always been the fact that we have foremen's in the district yards that we pay a great salary to. Matter of fact, I looked it up just today, and it looks like the foreman threes start at $72,000, and they can top out at somewhere at $95,000. I'm not sure if they qualify for overtime. Do they qualify for overtime?
Foreman threes do not.
Okay. But that's a great wage, and I'm happy we provide that as a city. But what I also see in their job description, which you may have seen last year, and maybe the year before that, and then maybe the year before that, is exactly what we're approving here today. And I know, well, finance is still with us, but they usually task us to try to save money, right? I mean, we've seen earlier today the $350,000 in the contingency fund, and what a large difference that can make for the community. So it's not that I'm against these contractors and the professional service agreements we have with them, it's just we are tasked to save money, and this is a department that I have total faith in, from the operators to the foreman ones, twos, and threes. I have faith in them. It isn't, I'm saying, let's not spend this money, because I don't want to spend it. I'm saying, let's not spend it because we have quality, capable city employees in place to do this. So I have highlighted, just for my colleagues who haven't heard this speech before, I'm going to tape it for next year, though, so we'll just hit play. Sooner or later, as we sit up here, and we all know we're tasked to save money, sooner or later, my colleagues are going to listen, and I'm going to get four votes. Maybe today. It's late in the day, they might give in, you never know. So, Madam Clerk, what's the proper way to do this if I have information I'd like Mr. Rouser to have, so I can ask him questions fairly? Do you want to hand that to him?
Yep.
Because I know you didn't bring it, and I apologize, but I did get it printed off by my staff many hours ago when they were here. I took the liberty to highlight the job descriptions. Yeah, I put it up on the overhead, everybody wants to see this. It'll help them when they vote. So at the top of that page, is that Foreman Three? Does that say three?
It says three in the highlighter.
Three? Okay, yeah, that three there. So that's the job description of the city maintenance Foreman Three that we pay, starting at $72,000 to $95,000. And could you just read me what the job description details are that are highlighted in reference to the professional service agreements that we have?
Inspects the work completed by contractors to determine if the work was done according to local codes or job specifications. Approves payments to contractors by evaluating work that was completed. Oversees snow removal operations in an assigned area of the city, which includes contract oversight.
So that's Foreman Three. I also have two and one up there highlighted as well, where I feel that our dedicated, hard-working, fully qualified employees across the board could save the city money by not having these professional service agreements in place. So in reference to number 85, Mr. Rouser, tell me exactly what the $60,000... Tell me what they do, what's turned in, in the process of why we have these agreements in front of us.
I appreciate the comments, Councilwoman Palermo, and I appreciate the vote of confidence for our staff. They are very qualified and very capable of doing the work, which brings us to the point of why we have the additional contracts. And it comes down to roles and assignments, and what staff is available to do certain jobs and to fill certain roles during a snow operation, which, as you can appreciate, and I know you're aware, that's an extremely busy time. So we go, we come into a period of time where we put people on 24-hour-a-day operations, and there's a lot of people doing a lot of jobs, covering a lot of ground for the city, and it requires more staff than we have in normal day-to-day operations, just due to the very nature of the event, with a lot of people doing a lot of jobs at a high rate. So what we purchase through the consultant agreements is, it's a typical contract administration function. We have residential snowplow contractors that are called in during certain snow events that plow our residential areas. Those are contractors that the city, at the time those contractors are brought in, the city does not have the staff directly to oversee them. And so we work in accordance with industry standards for contracts where we need oversight, or we bring in contract administrators who will follow those contractors, measure their work, approve their work standards, and then be available for contract administration questions after the fact, when invoicing is received, review the invoicing, process the payments, and to help us with all the administration of those contracts.
Okay. That's a perfect description. So that's exactly why we hire this company, but unless you and HR get together to change the job duties and descriptions that we have, I mean, as a city, if somebody were to apply for this job, they would see in their requirement, right there, there are only the three I highlighted, oversee snow removal operations in an assigned area of the city, which includes contract oversight. I don't know how it can be any more of a legal definition of what we're requiring them to do, that we don't have to hire these professional service agreements to do. I mean, I could ask law, is law still here?
Could I respond?
Mr. Koozie?
Could I respond to that?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So the foreman threes do that. They do that function, they perform that function. They not only oversee and spot-check the contractors that are out doing the work to make sure that those inspectors are doing their job, but they oversee the inspectors as well. They review the work that comes in, so they're doing contract oversight on both of those contracts. So from a numbers standpoint, when we have the consultants that come in to do contract administration during a snow operation, these five contracts will represent about 25 people per shift. So that's 50 people total in that 24-hour operation. What's represented in our Foreman Three staff is five individuals.
So we had the residential snowplow contracts in front of us earlier today. Nobody hit their light, nobody had any questions. I would like to assume that's because we feel they're doing a really good job, which means it's the same contractors, year after year, same residential areas, doing the same thing we require them to do. Do the contractors have GPS on their vehicles?
They do.
So they have GPS on their vehicles that... It would be a heavy task for a foreman in a 24-hour storm operation to ask them to drive the whole entire, each individual city yard to inspect what's going on, but that's why we require the contractors to have GPS.
Well, you know, a GPS unit can tell me where a contractor's been, it can't tell me the quality of their work. So I can tell that a contractor drove down a street, but it can't tell me if they did both sides of the street, and it can't tell me if they went curb to curb, and it can't tell me if they pushed up corners inappropriately. It can't tell me if they buried fire hydrants, it can't tell me if they did cul-de-sacs correctly. So that's what the inspector tells me, and that's the information that we get from that inspector.
It's like we're working hand in hand here. You lead me right into the next segue of complaints that we receive through the mayor's hotline, through citizens' complaints. See, I'm getting good at this, too. Like, we've talked about this so much.
Appreciate teamwork.
And if that's the case, and we're hiring professional service agreements, and we know we've had them in non-snow operations, where they've been in city council districts, where we found them to not do their job. We found them to not visually inspect concrete that should be poured to a certain depth that we require, that we want as a level of service for the citizens of Omaha. So that's why we have a mayor's hotline, that's why we have citizen complaints, that's why I can get on this mobile app right now that we give people to give complaints to. And my point is, if we have a prof... Now, listen, colleagues, if we have a professional service agreement in place, and we are paying, and I love this word, I use it every time, somebody to babysit our fully capable city employees, not just the employees we have, not just the foreman we have, not just the contract we all just approved, I believe at either 60 or 70, because we didn't have any questions about these contractors, because they are the same ones each and every year that have GPS on their equipment. But in 2019, we still had 3,700 complaints. In 2020, we had 1,900 complaints. And obviously, this past year, we had a lot less, which, to be fair, last year we had 187. So we paid... Remind me, how much did we pay this year in professional service agreements?
The past winter for these contracts was $47,621.
So we paid $47,000 to somebody to watch over our city employees, but we still had 187 complaints to come in, to either the citizen complaint line or the hotline. And I know that for every one, there could be 20 more. These are the people that just decided, I've had enough, we've got an issue, and we've got a complaint. So, colleagues, I'm giving you the greatest opportunity to save the city some money without So, colleagues, I'm giving you the greatest opportunity to save the city some money without the level of service being changed to the citizens of Omaha, because you're saying, "I have full faith in our city employees that is in their job description that we're paying them to do to do this job." Steve Curtis ain't here, but he would love to have this money back in the general budget. Well, I guess not the general budget, because it would be, obviously, funds that can only be used certain ways, but we would love to have that money as a city of Omaha. So, again, I just don't see why we have this with everything I've mentioned, with the fact that even though we are paying somebody to watch the employees and the contractors that we're paying, and as far as I know, we haven't deducted anybody's 40-hour work week for a job not done right, and we haven't had any... Well, have we had any deductions found for the contractors that we hired?
We've had significant deductions. I know I had those numbers in past years when we had this conversation, but it's been...
So, maybe not last year, though.
Tens of thousands of dollars. We've had significant deductions.
Okay. Well, I'm pleading my case, folks. Here's 60,000 times one, two, three, four, five contracts that you can save, and I promise you, the level of service will not change in your districts, because the complaints say otherwise, where, on average, you're still gonna have 1,500 complaints. So, let me ask you, Mr. Rouser, if a complaint comes in, contractors are gone, who do we send out to take care of the issue?
Typically, in a residential area, if the complaint comes in, and if, now, if the contractor's gone from that area but still working in another area, we would bring them back. They would come back and finish that work or take care of that issue. If it stays later, obviously, it's city forces that take care of it.
City forces that take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. You're recognized.
Oh, thanks. I just want to remind, last year, it was $47,000 total for all five, correct?
Correct.
So, it was less than $10,000 apiece.
Correct.
So, there's no guarantee that we're necessarily gonna be saving over $300,000. That's just kind of the worst-case scenario for tons of snow.
Correct.
But if we don't approve them, then there's no guarantee that anyone's gonna be watching these contractors. And let me tell you, if they're not being watched, the amount of complaints that I get when they're not watched very well, and we've had to switch... I mean, I've had to call them. We've switched contractors for a couple neighborhoods in the past, and my district, too, the number of complaints. So, last year wasn't too bad, but we didn't get as much snow. So, I would be very concerned about the number of complaints we would get if we eliminated the inspectors, because they're doing the job of what would take 25 people. We don't have 25 city workers to actually complete the job. So, I guess what Councilman Palermo is saying is that's in their job description, but they're, part of what they're doing, the inspectors are the contractors. So, that is part of their job, is they're watching the inspectors as well. Is that true?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. This is a foreman's position. Can you scroll to the top of that, that Councilman Palermo provided you? Keep going.
That's the top of that page. Do you want a different page?
What's the classification of this foreman?
Looks like there's a number of them here.
Okay. So, last year, when we were going through this, when I was new to the council, were we short of those foreman positions, and are we fully staffed there now?
I don't think we had vacancies at those foreman positions last year. We have some provisional employees working now. We don't, we're not fully staffed with full-time foreman ones, permanent foreman ones.
So, I'm not as much of a Jedi expert as Councilman Palermo is, but the AEO ones, twos, and threes, are they out plowing snow when it snows and there's a storm?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, a year ago, when we were going through our budget, Director Stube was sitting up here, and I think if I remember right, and I see, is that Dave back there, Grauman? All right, there's Dave. Good job negotiating that contract, Dave, because I want to commend Labor Relations and Local 251 and the mayor's office for getting an agreement that, at the time, I believe there was 49 vacancies with the AEO ones, twos, and threes. Does that sound right, Dave? He's nodding back there. Okay. So, now I think we're down to less than a dozen. Is that about right? Okay. So, again, great work by the mayor's office and your staff and 251. I think I'm much more comfortable now that the staffing is there, that these five positions of 60 grand apiece, that if we don't approve these today, does that mean that if complaints come in... Let me ask you that, Austin. So, if we don't approve these, and we get old man Winter clobbers this, good, we're due. What happens? What does it look like when a complaint comes in, and these inspectors for 60 grand apiece are not there? How do you shift that around? Again, we're high, our staff is much better, so the floor is yours.
Right. So, these inspectors, you know, their job is really, they're gonna be more proactive in front of the complaints. You know, I've taken a lot of complaints over the year. I've answered the phones in our office and filtered through a lot of them. A number of the complaints that we get tend to be more geared towards level of service than quality service, where someone expects a service that we don't necessarily provide. For instance, one of the really hot complaints is a windrow at the end of someone's driveway. Well, we do that. We windrow snow to the side of the street, and so, it tends to cover the end of people's driveways, and that's a nuisance, and people like to call and complain about that. It's something that we look at, better ways to solve, and through this contract is kind of one of the ways that we've looked at solving that, by changing some of the specifications and some of the tolerances that these inspectors actually look for. So, we're looking for them to be more proactive in front of those complaints, making sure that the contractor is doing their job within their scope of work, within their contract definition, that fits the city's level of service. If this position were to go away, and these contracts weren't approved, there would essentially be no one doing this job. So, no one would be overseeing those contractors. And I know that's a conversation that we have a lot on the construction side about, you know, who's watching over the construction, who's making sure that quality work is done? How are we getting the bang for our buck with the contractors that we hire? How are we making sure that they do justice in the city of Omaha? So, that role then goes away, because city staff isn't sufficient to cover that. We do have some inspectors that also supplement this operation internally. We don't have enough. We have about 10 more that come out to this operation, so in total, you're looking at a number of about 60 people. So, you take away 50 out of 60 people, you can see there's a job there that tends not to get done. Now, I can tell you from writing with these inspectors in years past, which I would encourage you to do, if you have a question about what they do and what their assignment is. I know a number on this board have done that in the past, but to ride along with them and to see the professionalism and the quality of the work and the dedication that they have in the middle of the night, when it's dark, and everybody's tired, and Red Bull's coursing through your veins, and here we've got, you know, a cul-de-sac that didn't get plowed appropriately, and you've got to call that contractor back in, and he's gonna yell at you, and you gotta keep going out. So, that's a job that doesn't get done, and that's, you know, that's fog-of-war things, right? Like, that all goes on. That all happens at 3:00 AM. And this is a job that's busy, and it's moving all the time, and I would hate to lose, I would hate to lose this assignment if we lost it. I think that number of complaints would increase astronomically. I can't prove that. That's obviously speculation on my part. But anytime you don't oversee a contract, you tend to get taken advantage of on that contract. And those deductions that we've taken in the past, those would get lost. We wouldn't get those. We'd have to go back entirely with city forces, finish plowing areas that a contractor didn't fully plow, because we didn't have an inspector watching it.
Well, I would be remiss to say that I too appreciate the work that Public Works does in years past, and again, I'm happy that the staffing levels have been brought up closer to the budgeted amount of positions that are there. And the people I mentioned across the board that made that happen, that is noted and appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Palermo? Thank you, Mr. President. So, did we have these contractors in place in 2019?
We did.
So, 3,700-plus complaints in 2019, and I'm sure if I quickly turned on my computer, but unfortunately, the battery died, I could find out by looking at the mayor's hotline, and this is where I get the information. I don't make it up. I get it from the mayor's hotline, which means there's probably even a lot more complaints, but these are just what we have logged. It makes me wonder who's watching the inspectors, because sometimes we sit here and make decisions for city employees and city business, but we've never actually did the job. Well, I actually have did the job, and when I did the job, we didn't have inspectors. What happened was, if there was a complaint, like I believe happens now, is it's a city employee that goes back out to resolve the issue. So, if we think that hiring these subcontractors will solve the issues of complaints, well, I can go back year after year, and there's thousands of complaints. Who's watching them?
Councilman, do you know if those complaints that you're referencing, do they correlate to contracted snow events directly, or are they for all city plow operations?
I'll have to use the line you guys give. I'll email you that information.
Okay, that'd be great, because we have about, average of about 15 snow operations in a given year. Typically, we contract three or four. So, there's a number of operations where it's 100% city forces. These contracts aren't utilized.
Look, Mr. Rouser, I have lived here my whole entire life. I have plowed snow with the city, without the city. I understand all the difficulties that go into this. My point of this is, we're paying somebody to watch a city employee that we have given a job to, given a job description to, and I'm not even talking the Foreman Ones, Twos, and Threes, who you have in front of you, highlighted is in their job description with the money they're making. I'm talking about the AEO Ones, AEO Twos, AEO Threes, the MR Twos, the guys you bring over from parks, the guys you bring over from sewer, the guys you bring over from traffic. I've lived this. I know. I don't sit here year after year because I think this is gonna be better. I've lived this. And now, we're fully staffed for the first time since I've been on council, not fully staffed, pretty darn close within Public Works, which means we can get to even more complaints now. All them trucks that sit there empty, idling, because we don't have a driver for, we're gonna have a driver this winter. There's another reason why we don't need a babysitter. You can bring this year after year. I promise you, I will never vote for it, and the reason is, is because I believe in your employees.
Appreciate that.
I believe in your employees that they can do this job without a babysitter. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Milton?
Thank you. And as always, Councilman Palermo, I always think that this is a compelling argument. They always have me just like this, on the edge. But I do think that this is important enough that we should allow Councilman Rowe to vote on it. I'm asking to lay it over. I don't think we even need to lay over the public hearing. I'm asking to lay the vote over so that Councilman Rowe can vote on it. He was here until 4:45, and he's only gone because he's at the wake of his father. So, I'm just asking to continue it one week, so that, continue the vote, because we don't have to continue the public hearing. Continue the vote for one week.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion, to continue the vote for one week.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
No motion's been made. I don't have a problem with it.
There's no further lights. Public hearing was closed.
My vote won't change. Let me just say this. You will hear me reiterate next week for Councilmember Rowe, who obviously is attending much more important business, these same things. And if any one of my colleagues would like this information, I will gladly get them the same information that I found here on my computer that's public to every city single employee. Because at the Labor Day Parade... Oh, Bob's still here. I didn't tell you this today in Public Works. Labor Day Parade, I walked at 251 this year, and I didn't find one city employee that had anything bad to say about the city. These are operators. These are people across the board in Public Works, from sewer, traffic, streets, everywhere, everybody that 251 encompasses. And I hadn't heard that until this year, and probably it's because of the work that went into that contract. So, let me tell you what happens when you have a happy employee. Work gets done better. The work that you expect to get done gets done right. There's another reason why you don't need these babysitters. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second to lay over for one week. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Milton.
Yeah.
Palermo.
Yes.
Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item ninety, in ordinance to approve an agreement with Premier Biotech LLC for drug and alcohol testing of city employees.
Public hearing on number ninety is today. Proponents, please.
Good evening, David Grauman, City Human Resources, 1819 Foreman, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Good evening, want to be a little city safety, 1819 Foreman, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? I think you guys are the last two. Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item ninety-one, in ordinance to accept unauthorized disbursement over more than one fiscal year from the Nebraska Crime Commission, Fiscal Year 2021 Stop Violence Against Women Grant Award in the amount of $248,642.18.
Public hearing on number ninety-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed.
Non-action items, items ninety-two through 118, do not require public hearing nor city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second. Roll call.
Johnson. Milton. Palermo.
Yes.
Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 6:45.